Okay, thank you for joining us this evening. We've been in closed session at 5:00 this afternoon. We went into closed session and in closed session we discussed public employment title, city manager interim, city manager pursuant to government code section 54957B. In closed session, no reportable action will be taken. So before I call this meeting to order, I'd like to invite for our invocation Rosario Damian, the World of Life Church, to come forward to give us our invocation. Please stand.
Lord Jesus, we thank you, God. We come before you right now, Father, just giving you all the honor and all the glory, Lord. We ask right now, Lord Jesus, that you just have your way in this meeting, Lord. I pray, Lord Jesus, that you pour down of your wisdom, of your knowledge, Lord Jesus, upon every person in this place, Lord God, that it would be a meeting, Lord God, that will help in any way, Lord Jesus, that our sitting is held, Lord. I thank you, Lord God, for your goodness, for your mercy and grace, and I pray all of this in your mighty name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call this meeting to order for July 16th, 2025. And Chief, could we have the pledge?
The Lord Jesus is the God of the United States of America, and he is the great for which he stands, Lord God, and therefore, for liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a roll call, please. Lucy?
Sanders?
Here.
Chavez?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Emma Bill.
Here. And our next item is consideration of approval of the agenda as submitted. Any questions about our agenda items? And if we could have a motion to approve agenda as submitted?
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda as submitted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, second by Sanders. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, ayes have it. Now I have a presentation. So we, once a month, we do our, come forward, Carlos. Once a month, we do our employee of the month, and this, this month for, actually last month for June 2025, was Mark Hegi. He could not be here tonight. There's, his daughter's getting married, I think, in a few days, so he's a, tomorrow. Oh, he's a really busy man. And so we understand that, but anyway, he does a great job as a foreman in our Public Works Department, and the city council wants to recognize him for his outstanding performance, dedication to our city. It's really all about our city employees that make this city as great as it is. Carlos is here to accept it for him. So Carlos, maybe you could say a few words about Mark.
Well, I want to thank Mark for, very hard worker for the city of Los Banos. I've been a coworker of his, had the pleasure of working with Mark since he started. I want to congratulate him and keep up the great work, Mark. Well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mark. Thank you all. Okay, now I'd like to open the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of our city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Our speakers will be limited to five minutes on their presentation, and anyone that would like to speak before us, please come forward and introduce yourself. We'd appreciate that. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and the council members and staff members of the city of Los Banos. My name is Larry Byers. I live at 706 Puyallup Street here in Los Banos. I am a member of the tree commission for Los Banos as well, and I was present at the Parkside Chat on Saturday at College Greens Park. It was hosted by Mr. Mayor here and also Mr. Sanders, and it was a wonderful session. I got there early, thinking I was going to be surrounded by a lot of different people. There were only about two dozen people that attended, but it was an intimate situation, and we could ask all kinds of questions, which I did, and I got great answers. And I want to thank Mr. Mayor and Mr. Evans for being there to answer our questions. I got a lot of great questions asked and answered, and I know there's going to be another Parkside Chat and other parks. Mr. Mayor will probably be announcing those too, and I just want to mention that if you do come to the events, they are very informal, and you can ask all the questions you may have. One thing I'd like to recommend, though, is to bring a lawn chair, because there's no place to sit down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being there, too. Anyone else would like to come forward, please come forward at this time.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I am Heather Wheeler. I am the Community Schools Program Coordinator for the District for the Los Banos Unified School District. This is Shue Martinez. She is our Community Relations Liaison, and I just wanted to come and introduce myself and let everybody know about the program, because it is new. It is a new grant that came to Los Banos Unified this year, and the purpose of the Community Schools Partnership Program is to really bring together all of the different community members to support student success and to help families and community members overcome any obstacles that might get in the way of student success, including food insecurity, housing insecurity, medical needs. So all of the things that are often outside of the realm of schools, this grant is intended, and this program is intended to help bring all of those resources together. We will be opening a family resource center. Once the Early Learning Center is completed, the TK Center will be moving there, and so all of the younger students will be at the new Early Learning Center at Right By Grasslands, and we will be getting to move into that center. So the Family Resource Center will be located next to Miano Elementary. But before then, we're still doing, we're already out doing events, and we are working with the Parks and Recreation and hosting a backpack giveaway along with Assemblywoman Soria and with Binational of California, and that will be August 2nd, starting at 10:00 a.m. and going to approximately 2:00 p.m., and there's going to be all kinds of fun besides the backpack giveaway, but what a, you know, great way to start the school year and making sure that students, you know, start with what they need in order to get everything going. But we'll also have giveaways and games and free food, and we would love everybody to come out, even if you don't have school-aged kids yourself right now. We want everybody in the community to come out and join in and get to know each other. And then we will be having events throughout the year as well. We'll be also partnering with the Parks and Rec for the trunk or treat, and we'll be doing a holiday giveaway, so be on the lookout for any of those flyers, and if you have any questions or want to reach out to our Community Schools Program, we're excited to begin creating those relationships and partnerships throughout all of Los Banos.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's hard to believe that schools starts August 15th.
August 11th.
August 11th. So summer, summer's already over.
That's August 12th, so it's, right, so that week, it starts very quickly. Yeah, it's already on.
Yeah.
Just like that. So August 2nd, we would love to see you out at the community center.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Come forward. We'd love to hear from you. Welcome.
All righty. Good evening, City of Los Banos. My name's Carthick Prasad. I'm here on behalf of Congressman Adam Gray, and also here on behalf of my good colleague, India Buonroster, who is unfortunately tied up in Madera, so I'm very sorry that you get me instead of her, because I know she's a lot better than I am. But I'm just wanting to give a quick legislative update on what's going on in the big city of Washington, D.C. So just yesterday, the congressman joined in on the Dignity Act, which is a comprehensive immigration reform bill that both invests and modernizes border security, overhauls the asylum system, and grants legal protections to individuals who are already here. On Monday, we were part of the Livestock Indemnity Program Improvement Act that updates the USDA's payment rates to ensure farmers are fairly compensated. Last week, we introduced the Protecting Patient Access to Cancer and Complex Therapies Act that aims to ensure fair reimbursement for medical providers and commercially available medications for patients. The PFAS Alternatives Act was also introduced, which aims to develop, to support development of a next-generation PFAS-free firefighting gear, which I'm sure if anyone who's served in any kind of fire station can attest to, is very, very important for the future. Alongside that, that was introduced directly with the Honoring Our Fallen Heroes Act, which expands access to federal support for families of first responders who have passed away due to exposure to carcinogens in the line of duty. You can probably see from these bills, they're very cleverly named and just sort of roll off the tongue, so if anyone has any questions about them, you know, feel free to reach out to our office. More than happy to connect with you on that. Additionally, India did have her mobile district office hours, I believe, earlier this week. Got some people out, we had some good discussions, and we're always looking forward to receiving input from the city. So if the city council has any questions or concerns, send them our way. And August is just around the corner, the members will be back, and we're always looking for more events to get the congressman to, so if you guys know anything, let us know. We'd love to swing by, and that's all I've got right now, so thank you.
Thank you for the update. Welcome.
Mayor, councilpeople, I'm Pastor Raul at the Mercy Springs Church of the Nazarene, and I want to come up and share an event that's going to be coming up in September, especially in light of kind of our, our national situation, if you will, but we will be holding another immigration workshop on September 1st. We partner with the Central Valley Immigration Integration Collaborative. We will have lawyers onsite and other DOJ-approved people who can help with things like DACA, applications for citizenship, or even just answer questions that we have. If anybody has ever gone through the immigration process, then what you will find is that it is almost as complicated as our tax laws. It is a very difficult thing, and every single little situation and nuance changes it drastically. And so it is a very difficult thing, and I say that because regardless of where anybody stands on any situation politically, I pray that we would all recognize that we are all people, and that things are never black and white, that each one of you, even up there, try to sort out the business of the city and figure out how to happen, and also just speaking with Joe about some of the work that they're doing at the ballparks and, you know, waiting on contractors and everything else. Nothing is ever a sure thing, and nothing is black and white. And as we go through what we learn, and what I've learned as a pastor, is that if you want to do what is right to other people, you want to do what is right for your community, then the reality is that it's messy, that you're muddling through the gray, and that you have to be patient and be willing to do so. And so I pray that we would all do that and continue to just muddle through that gray together and just show patience with each other, and invite our neighbors to come be a part of this. If you know someone who, who could use this, this resource, that they can reach out on our website, they can give me a call, and like I said, it's free, it's just a place where they can come get some of their paperwork in order, and that will be again September 4th, beginning at 4:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Please come forward. Okay, we do not see or hear anyone coming forward, and I will close the public forum. Well, actually, before I close the public forum, I think we have a letter, right, Lucy? Okay. That came to us.
Dear Councilmember Evan Sanders, I am writing to express my growing concern regarding the frequent speeding of vehicles along Ward Road. This issue has become increasingly noticeable and poses a significant safety risk to residents, pedestrians, and other drivers in the area. Speeding on Ward Road is not only dangerous, but also threatens the well-being of families and children who live nearby. The high speeds increase the likelihood of accidents and make it difficult for pedestrians to safely cross the street, especially during evenings. To address this issue, I would like to suggest a few possible solutions for your consideration. Installation of speed bumps or raised crosswalks, increased speed limit signage and warning signs, regular police patrols and speed monitoring, and improved street lighting. I believe that taking prompt action to address this issue will help prevent potential accidents and improve the quality of life for everyone in the community. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Brielle de La Rosa.
Of course, we, if we get any letters, we'll announce, we'll read them during the public forum. They'll also be put on our webpage for public viewing. We'll take this letter, and we have traffic safety committee meetings ever so often, and the chief heads those up, so we'll give this letter to the chief, and he'll consider those options and that on Ward Road at the next safety meeting. So we appreciate that, and now we'll move on to consideration of approval of the consent agenda, and Lucy, if you could read the items on the consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Check registers for 25227 through 252620 in the amount of $2,953,005.82. City Council minutes for May 21st, 2025 meeting, May 29th, 2025 adjourned joint meeting with the Planning Commission, June 4th, 2025 meeting, June 18th, 2025 meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6950, accepting the 2023-2024 fiscal year audit reports, independent accountants' report on applying agreed-upon procedures, Article XIIB appropriation limits. City Council Resolution Number 6951, accepting the 2016-2017 Transportation Development Act funds financial statement. City Council Resolution Number 6952, accepting the independent auditor's report and financial statements for the abandoned vehicle abatement program for fiscal years 2022 through 2023 and 2023 through 2024. City Council Resolution Number 6953, authorizing entering into a third amendment to lease agreement between the City of Los Banos and Marlene Pennington for rental of the Ranchwood Park facility for two years at $2,500 a month for year one and $2,600 a month for year two. City Council Resolution Number 6954, authorizing award of construction contract to TBS contractors in the amount of $106,719.85 with a contingency in the amount of $10,671.98 for the construction of the flow meter replacement project. City Council Resolution Number 6955, authorizing the interim city manager to file a regional surface transportation program exchange program fund claim form for fiscal year 2024 through 2025. City Council Resolution Number 6956, accepting public improvements for all off-site landscape associated with South Point at Regency Park, phases eight through 10. And City Council Resolution Number 6957, accepting public improvements for all, is that duplicated? For all off-site landscape associated with Sunrise Ranch, phases one and two. City Council Resolution Number 6958, authorizing the interim city manager to sign an agreement with the Merced County Office of Education for school resource services covering the 2025 through 2026 through 2027 through 2028 school years, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Lucy. So many of these items, there's a lot of things on the consent agenda this evening. Many of them are yearly audits that are taking place and just regular business as always. That's why there's so many items on consent agenda this evening, but is there any item any council member would like to remove for further discussion? Yes?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item D, E, F, and G for discussion.
Okay. Any other items? Kevin?
I just want to talk about I and J really quick.
So I think, let's have a motion to approve the rest of it then, and we'll minus D, E, F, G, I, and J. So if we could have a motion to approve A, B, C, H, and K, then we can move on discussion on the other ones.
So moved, Mayor.
Okay. Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, H, and K. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, ayes have it. Okay, let's go ahead and start with item D, which is City Council Resolution 6951, accepting 2016-17 Transportation Development Act funds financial statement, and with this, this is Finance Director Moreno. You have a specific question, Mayor Protam, or do you?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just would like a brief explanation for the public for the reason for this audit.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So this audit is, audit to, that was, that is done through the city of Los Banos that stopped in 2016, and it is governed by MCAG, and it's for local transportation funds and state transit assistance programs and allocations. There was a lack by the city of Los Banos to do this audit from that point forward, and there was also a lack from MCAG to make the city of Los Banos do their obligation, and so now they're coming forward and requiring us to do this audit. They are paying for the audits all the way from 2017 to 2024, and we will be bringing the other audits to the council by the end of the summer, it looks like, and, and therefore, and from there forward, we are going to be responsible for our audit moving forward. There was no findings, everything, there was an adjustment just due to timing of the monies coming into the city of Los Banos and the timing of MCAG's books, but other than that, there was no, there was no misstatements or any findings. Thank you very much.
Okay, item E is city council, anybody else have a question on that? Item E would be City Council Resolution 6952, accepting independent auditor report financial statement for abandoned vehicle abatement program for '22 to '24, and your questions on that, Mayor Protam?
Thank you very much, Mayor. On page 83, we have a negative balance at the end of '24 of $16,656, so just for explanation to the public, if you can just let us know how this happened or why it happened.
So the abandoned vehicle abatement program has also a timing issue in terms of how the, this is just for revenues and expenditures and fund balance, so some of the receivables, there's quarterly reporting, and so the timing of when those monies come in versus the timing of when they actually get recorded, it's in the next year that it gets compensated, so we're really not in the negative, we're just holding a receivable, our money that's going to be coming in from, from the program.
Okay. And also, just as a side caveat, this money goes through, I believe it's DMV first, I mean through Highway Patrol first, more than likely to garner some income from non-op, and then it goes to MCG after that. They probably collect their administrative fees before it comes to the city of Los Banos.
Yeah, so it's the DMV and then MCAG, and then it gets to the city, so that's the, the timing issue in terms of, of the reporting, but yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on that one? Okay, then we'll move on to item F with City Council Resolution 6953, authorizing entering into a third amendment to lease agreement between the City of Los Banos and Marlene Pennington for rental of the Ranchwood Park facility. This is a two-year, $2,500 a month, and one-year, $2,600 a month for year two. So your questions on that?
Okay, well, I, I do have some things that I've written down here, Mayor, and I know that this is a situation where we probably need this level of daycare in our community, but one of the things that concerns me is, number one, I think these, this particular Ranchwood facility, the community facility and the College Green was built by the city, not by the developers, back probably in the 90s, for community use, and we also had a facility over at, over by the junior high school in Talbot Park that was, I think, maybe initially built for community use as well, I'm not sure, but it was rented out extensively for daycare purposes, and the council had to make a decision whether or not they were going to continue to do that, or whether or not we should put the building up for sale because of the liability to us and to garner the income from it. So that is now owned by an agency that works with a county for daycare, and so when I looked at, at this particular project, it's, it's been rented out for quite some time. some time. There's no public use to the public at all. If families who live in that area or anywhere in the city want to have a birthday party at the facility, everybody has to go to College Greens to rent out because it's, it's totally being used by the daycare facility. So when I, when I looked at what we're going to be charging, it's roughly, as I understand, about a 2,500 square foot building. And of course, you know, what the initial rent is going to be for year one and then year two comes to about $61,000 for the two years. And when I consulted today with our Parks and Rec Director about what we rent College Greens out for, it's roughly somewhere, you know, and it's not exact, that we get maybe about $36,000 a year on rentals for that facility, and it, and it's rented all the time. So between the two, for two years, there's roughly about, if, if I had to say, a loss of about $11,000 on the, on the Ranchwood facility. So I, I asked who pays, who pays for the utilities and who pays for the upkeep of that building? And it's the City of Los Banos that comes out of the general fund. So at, at $2,500 a month and $26 for the square footage does not, I don't think that that covers the utility costs and the upkeep of that building and the parking lot. So I, I think, at least from my perspective as, as a council member, do we want to continue to do this, or do we want to sell this building, keep the park, and relieve ourselves of the liability? I, I, I just think, for me, I think we need to make some decision here about going forward past this two years. What are we going to do with this building? And, and that's kind of the nutshell of what I'm looking at as far as numbers are concerned. And, and again, I know it's, it's something that we need in the community, there's no doubt about that, but are we, are we still going to be a middleman here and incur costs which technically I would think is gifting money, which I don't think cities should be doing? So again, I don't know, there's nothing in this report that tells me at the amount of money we're renting it for, does it cover the utility costs and does it cover the maintenance of caring for this building on an annual basis? Only thing I know is that, 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 those additional expenses are coming out of the general fund.
I'm sure the liability they, they have to have insurance that covers. They have a $2 million, $4 million liability, so there's no liability. I don't think we'd be selling the building either if, if they weren't there, but those are good questions.
Well, $2 million is not a lot in today's time. If something really seriously happens, $2 million is, is a small amount of money, and then after that, who do they go after, you know? Maybe Mr. Vaughn can answer that. Is, is a city going to be liable after the $2 million is exhausted?
So they have $2 million per occurrence, $4 million general aggregate, and anything in excess of that, if the city were responsible, the city's self-insurance program would kick in after that point.
Well, those, those are the thoughts that I wanted to throw out there to the council. Again, I, I'm not trying to discourage this business whatsoever, but are we still, are we going to walk down this avenue like we walked down with the facility at Talbot, at Talbot Park? And, and are, is this going to be a perpetual thing going forward? Because we're just doing a two-year lease now. What is the thought? Are, are we going to do something else with this building and turn it back to a community building and try to, you know, see or help the, the nursery school to see if there's another facility? Or if we're just going to let this be a nursery school facility in perpetuity going forward? And if so, I think we need to consider the cost to the, the taxpayers for the utilities and for the upkeep of the building. That needs to be built into the cost of rental as well.
Joe, do, do they have a separate meter, electrical meter there?
Yes, so the, the building is within Ranchwood Park. The park itself is funded by the landscaping lighting district, so the playground, the mowing, that sort of services, the building in terms of power utilities as well as general maintenance would be from the general fund, which is the same situation as College Greens. The College Greens building is set up the same way, where both revenue and expenditures associated to the building are attached to the general fund and not the lighting and landscape district.
My question is, does the building have a separate meter or is it the whole park?
Yes, separate.
Separate meter, so we could actually see what the building is using?
Yes.
Okay. I think that would help us make a decision. Maybe we could just pull this back, get a little bit more information, and this, when, when is this lease up?
It's already up.
It's been expired, but I can bring the item back with a bit more analysis if that's what council desires.
Okay, well.
Really, really quick.
Sure.
I, I had basically the same thoughts. I went and drove by the building because I hadn't seen it in like 15 years because I saw the $2,500 and thought, that seems really low. And I was picturing the College Greens building. That building looks like it's twice the size, has a playground, has a fence, like knowing that we're paying utilities and maintenance on the lawn and everything, that's, the rent's really low, I think, for that building. So the last thing I want to do is, is say, oh, sorry, and, and have some business suddenly without a place to, to run it, to run a daycare. But I do think that we need to look at this.
Okay, so we can direct this without a motion? Or we need a motion to direct this?
You can pull it and ask that it be put on the next agenda.
Okay. So yeah, why don't we go ahead and make a motion to pull it, put it on the next agenda? And I think we need to see the utility cost on just the building.
So Joe, do you know if the lease itself deals with who pays the utilities? This is just an amendment, not the entire lease.
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
So the lease itself could, she could, she could be paying the utilities. We don't have the information in front of us right now.
Yeah, it might, the information might just settle everything, so we just got to know more, I think, basically is. Yeah, Eric?
So the, the recitals that have been created by Mr. Vaughn did not include that information? And we, I'm trying to see here if.
Yeah, the amendment is just, the amendment is just amending part of the lease, the original lease.
Well, you know, just in general, I think when the council has to look at things like this, that we need all of the information to make a solid decision, not just part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Just want to make sure before we go back and do the research, which we're totally willing to do, is that we, I understand what the request is. Is the term of two years a sufficient term? Do we have any issues with that? Sort of desire to go back and contact the?
What, what was the, what was the term before? How many years was it?
It was five years, and this amendment's only two years.
Well, I mean, that's at the decision of the council, you know, because it's two years now, and, you know, it, I think it may have been indicated in there the previous five years, but I, you know, being that it's shortened for two years, I don't know if it's because economically we need to review it after two years to see if it's viable, and I'm okay with that.
It's on page 114 of the staff report.
On 114?
Yeah, we push 114 of the agenda.
I'm just not sure if it's been adhered to. I would have to look that.
I'm looking, I, I looked at it, and it, it states that the L C is supposed to, however, during my time here, I've never seen the utilities be built.
What's the section number?
Article four.
But I can bring that forward. I've never seen.
To let everybody.
That was the original agreement.
So, but are we collecting that?
Not to my knowledge, I've never seen it be built.
So to let everybody know.
This goes back to 2010.
That may be watching us from your office or home. You can view all this information we're talking about online. You go to the console tab and go to council meetings, and the PDF is there to view our whole agenda packet, so you can follow what we're talking about. So I don't have a problem with two years, I think that's a.
And if the, if the lease does state that the L C is, is responsible for it, there also might be the possibility that they're being built directly with this agreement. So we'll have to look at it, bring it back for the next council meeting.
And, and that's good. You know, again, I'm saying it's, we don't have all of the information, and I, in the packets, I'd like to see all of the information so that we can make a solid decision. So I'm okay with.
Okay, why don't you make a motion to pull item F?
Sure.
And bring it back to the next meeting with more information.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item on the consent agenda 8F and be brought back to the next meeting of August 6.
Okay, we have a motion and second, as stated. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Now we move on to item G, which is Resolution 6954, authorizing award of construction contract to TBS contractors in the amount of $106,719.85 with a contingency of amount of $10,671.98 for the construction of a flow meter replacement project. So your questions?
Yes, Mayor, it's on page 128. The first bullet point in the case that construction of the major work consists of removing, I won't read all that, but let's see, going, flow meters and their hand, handhold valves ranging from six inches to 18 for various sites in Los Banos. So I, you know, because this is the agreement, and I see a map on the back that shows, what, six sites, but they're not named in the agreement. And the only thing that I'm asking is that rather than the word various, that we name the sites that are going to be worked on via this agreement.
Well, the agreement refers to all of those attachments.
There's, there's a picture, but it is not stated in the agreement. So I'm requesting that the sites that are named on the, on the map, which if these are the same sites, that they be named in the agreement.
Excuse me, the way, the way the agreement is set up, and the way all of our agreements on our construction projects are set up, is it refers to various attachments that are part of the agreement. So that attachment that you're referring to is part of the agreement.
So where does it state that it refers to the attachment?
Well, it's number six, contract documents, and it refers to A through O.
And Joe, you want to update us a little bit? Acting Public Works Director?
Yes, thank you. So to confirm, yes, those are the six locations that'll be on site. Staff relies on our consultant engineers to, to put together our scopes for our projects. The way that he, they listed it was the various locations. And yes, just to confirm, just to reiterate Mr. Vaughn's comment, the, the map on the back would be part of that agreement. I don't know if there's an ability to add detail to the agreement, but the map would be part of the agreement, which, the map, which is on page 132, does show the, the different locations, which are each storm stations around town for the flow meters.
Yeah, I, I'm still not finding it on item six, so Joe, can you tell me where that is? Yeah, I'm reading, I'm seeing that.
I believe it would be referenced as, oh, the addenda, the addenda.
So if we can expedite it, if.
I, I read it. Yeah, for me, I think if we, you know, it just says attachments to the agreement, and there are multiple attachments, but this is specifically referring to the map of the attachment. And so if we can just add that in there, that it refers to the maps that are, the map that is attached for this contract, it, it would help me feel more secure about it.
Okay, we'll do that in the future.
All right. So does that require a motion?
No. That's direction.
Okay.
Okay, the next item is item I, City Council Resolution 6956, accepting public improvements for all off-site landscaping associated with South Point at Regency Park, phase eight through 10. And that would be Joe, and Evan, what's your question on that one?
Yeah, so we could probably just address I and J kind of together here.
Okay.
So I drove by these, this is just, it's kind of on the heels of our community standards thing, so I figured it's topical. And I know that we have a bond for a year, I think, that any, anything wrong with this, like it gets fixed. I'm curious who's, who's responsible for making sure that happens. So I drove by and I saw six to 10 dead trees at one of them already that have just gone in, so, and then some other issues. I was curious about the bond, like who, who, is there a process in place to check up on these things before that bond expires?
Yes, so that would be out of our public works office in terms of what Council Member Sanders is referencing, is a one-year maintenance bond relating to, in this case, off-site landscaping for these areas being accepted. In this case, it's primarily wall planters throughout those areas. So we have a one-year maintenance bond, and that would be up to public work staff to initiate that. I would say it's, it's not very common to, to have to pull those bonds. Typically, you're able to work with the developer in this case, or whoever is moving those forward to get that work done. In this particular case, there are some trees that are, are not what I would consider particularly healthy, however, well, our staff did go out there and confirm that they're all alive, and that's where we do have a scheduled three-month checkup on them. So this fall, we'll be checking up on them. We have confirmation from both the contractor on site as well as the developer that they'll get replaced if, if they do not recover. And of course, we have the leverage of the one-year bond, and so that's where those items are.
And then just general feedback, kind of on the heels of our community standards thing. I, I went, I went with the eye of what is this going to look like after a year? What is, what is it going to look like in five years? And my concern with the way that we're having developers do these areas is they basically throw a mulch under that is essentially nothing after six months. There's already weeds coming through here. There's the plantings that we talked about, the community standards, that are already spilling over into the street, and they're, you know, halfway into the, the concrete section of the street. I just, I'm concerned that, that what we're, what we're requiring them to do is the absolute minimum possible to make it look okay for a little while. The Sunrise Ranch doesn't have anything that covers the walls, which concerns me because graffiti, like there's a lot of neighborhoods where they have the vines, and where the vines die off, you end up with graffiti on the walls. So I just generally am concerned, I want to make sure, I know I talked about this at community design meeting as well, but I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that everything doesn't look nice right after the neighborhoods are built, but down the road as well.
Absolutely, and some of that comes from discussion leading up to developments. Some of it comes from our community's design standards, and there's another portion of it, that's our standards specifications, that comes from our, our public work side. That's in the early stages of being revamped, it's been quite a while since it's been redone. And, you know, in terms of, I guess, referencing, avoiding, say, the minimum effort towards, towards landscape, I think those are some of the best tools that the city has. Direction from council as far as, as what you and the Planning Commission are looking for, also assist staff while we're reviewing these, these items. And, you know, there's other considerations as well, I think particularly, I, I wasn't involved in the Sunrise Ranch as far as the development aspect of it goes from the early stages. However, you know, what comes to my mind is on some of those, those walls, you, you, there are considerations that you have to make, like, for example, a lot of times ivy doesn't grow on these walls that have sun beating down on them. There's other mitigation options, like shrubbery, things like that, but I, I think maybe that might have gone, might have factored into decisions years back, but I can't speak to it specifically, but I do know, just sit in these discussions there, it's not a one-size-fits-all for everything, but yes.
It's, I know it's challenging to grow things, especially planting them in the spring, like right now, and then expecting things to grow in the city is challenging when it's 150 degrees.
And soil conditions make a big difference, especially on the north side of town.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to bring it up, I'm not going to hold these up or anything, I just want to voice my feelings on it.
Thank you.
Also, our design standards, don't forget all future, the deep well watering of the trees, too, you need to do that.
I'm, I'm a big advocate.
Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So Joe, when, when the trees are planted and during its growing process, are, are we doing any kind of nutrition to them at all? Or is it just putting them in and hoping they survive?
So it depends on the situation. So it depends on the situation. There's occasionally soil amendments, but not typically things like fertilizer or other supplements for the trees. That's not part of our standards and specs, and I don't see it too commonly. When we plant it as a city, we definitely try to add soil mix with supplements to it to try to get those trees to, say, adhere to that soil. Like I said, especially on the north side of town, the soil is just not as conducive to growth, and so we want to be careful on that end of things. But in terms of, again, I think that goes back to our standards and specs and trying to see how we can mitigate these issues, like the deep root irrigation system is really to try to pull those roots down. What you're suggesting there is really to try to help make a healthy environment for them to grow, and I think all those factors need to be, you know, implemented and considered depending on the site location in order for us to have successful trees. We have some neighborhoods where these trees are 20 years old, and they're, you know, they're small, they're, they look like they're maybe five years old. So I think the point of trees for all of us, I think, is getting that shade and getting the aesthetic of it, and so, yeah, I think those are good mitigation factors for us to consider as we go through the standards and specs. I think that that would be an item that would fall under the standards and specs and not the community design standards.
Thank you.
And I'll just throw in one thing. Over the last 25 years, our water table has dropped so low in the valley that at one point, many places in town, the water table's three and four feet down. Now it's 40 and 50 feet down. So trees that were planted 25 years ago had a lot better chance of growing than today. That's what that deep watering really helps. Okay, so before us, we have to take, make a decision, item D, E, G, I, and J. So I need a motion. Big one? Yeah, we took a separate decision on that one. So if I could have a motion to approve D, E, G, I, and J.
So, Mayor.
And we have a motion and second, approve item eight, let's see. Eight, D, E, G, I, and J on the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Thank you. And now we'll move on to item nine, Colorado Ballpark Renovations Project Concept and Financial Plans. And with this, we'll go to our Acting Public Works Director and Park Recreation Director, Joe Heim. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the first of two big projects that we'll be presenting tonight, this one we've presented a few times to City Council, is the Colorado Ballpark renovation. Tonight, we will be talking about both the conceptual side of it as well as some of the financial side of the options, and really, on the staff side of things, we're looking for just direction from City Council. Of course, items such as like the financing half, which is largely the second half of this presentation, that would be an item that would be brought back formally depending on direction, but this is really information for that, and hopefully also non-directional conceptual plan. So we ran through a lot of the background in previous meetings as far as Colorado Ballpark, so I won't spend too much time on it, but just for those that may be new to the presentation. The ballpark is one of our older parks in town, it's a focal point for the community, opened in 1959. It's hosted Little League since 1969, and has three ball fields, a skate park, and two tennis courts, as well as a large parking lot on site. Site conditions are deteriorated, I've shown some photos in previous meetings, but I'll skip those tonight, but it's just to say that there are electrical ADA, building in general, just a condition of irrigation and other facilities on site that are of concern. Tonight, we'll be proposing an estimated $13 million project budget for this particular improvement. So just going through kind of some of the steps, again, I'm going to try to keep this brief, just because we have presented the item a few times, but we've been doing community engagement on this project for quite a while, dating back to 2019. It was a big part of our parks master plan process in 2021. It was, we submitted for the Rural Rec and Tourism Grant. We brought it to council a couple times a couple years ago, as well as had some March community meetings following a February council meeting to the current council here. Lots of comments from those March meetings, as well as, of course, our last council meeting presentation. A lot of the comments were about the skate park, about security or fencing, things along those nature. We talked a lot about that splash pad space that the council had discussed the last presentation, and what that might look like if we were to go a different direction in the splash pad. Open space, family space was big parts of the conversation. There was talk about extending the skate park, things along those lines. A walking trail or a loop, I guess you could say, along the outfield of the field. And just in general, just a lot of really positive comments from the community, and I appreciate everybody that came out. We had a couple meetings and wanted to thank them, as well as our council members that were able to attend, and appreciate the support from the community on this item. It's been something that I've always enjoyed, is talking to the community about it. Everybody seems to have a story about the park or a relative that played there. So the project scope and design, I'll show you the conceptual designs again in a couple slides here, but the new design will feature a centralized parking lot and kind of a plaza space. It'll have consolidated buildings, as well as you'll see two smaller fields as opposed to what is on site currently. That's primarily driven from conversations with Little League, and what age groups are the most common for them and the most popular for them, as well as supporting them as it goes through tournaments. We ultimately want these fields to be used. Expanding the skate park and providing a walking loop, as well as the proposed open space that we talked about. And I just want to emphasize, you know, these improvements aren't just about cosmetic improvements, there's structural issues on site that we want to address, but we also, if we're going to make the investment, we want to go down the path of trying to make it as nice as possible in consideration of hopefully this being improvement that'll last a long, long time. With that, I'll show you the initial concept that we had presented in February. It showed the splash pad there to the north of the skate park there in the middle. We had discussed keeping the character of the park on site. We discussed things like Saturday conflicts as far as summertime, Little League, their regular season wraps up by about May, but they still carry on with All-Stars and other tournaments that they do, so it would certainly be busy on Saturdays throughout the summer. The splash pad, as a reminder, would only be open probably from about Memorial Day to about Labor Day, so it's got a seasonal aspect to it. And just other elements as far as consideration of that particular amenity on site. And so we had updated it to just kind of have an open space there. Some of the conversation with it had been having an open space for teams to kind of gather before or after their games, and as well as a lot of comments during the community meetings, you know, they wanted to have a little bit more space for, say, family activities on a Tuesday afternoon or whatever day it is, when Little League is not, when there's not organized activities on site. In addition, it's kind of a support for the skateboarders that talked about things like having events of their own and kind of having a space that would support that. Just about everything else on site remains the same. You'll see, which is number 17, a walking loop on the outside of the two small fields that connects around, so you can kind of just do a full walking loop of those fields. You know, you often see parents that want to watch from the outfield, or maybe, you know, push a stroller as the games are going and just making that accessible. I think it also helps to support use while, again, there's not organized activities going on. Some of the other considerations with this design is, one of the big benefits of having a parking lot designed this way is the ability to pull up, drop off your child for practice or game, and then be able to park. In addition, lighted parking lot, the parking lot islands prevents, we have a lot of figure eights and different people that like to use that parking lot for non-authorized activities. Again, you'll see the big field and the two smaller fields. You'll see the skate park, we've worked quite a bit with the skate park group, and as we move forward, design, we would certainly be working with them further to ensure a skate park that meets their needs, and is something that really is prideful for our community. And I do want to emphasize that this is a conceptual design, and we still have steps to go and engineering aspects to go as well. And I also want to just highlight that this maintains the current footprint of the facility. As we kind of shift towards the finance half of this project, we are projecting end of fiscal year '25, '26 balance of $10.93 million in the Park Development Fund. Park Development Fund, as a reminder, is a fund that collects impact fees as developments come in, residential developments come in. And so we use that for projects like park acquisition, park development, also identified as the skate park and a possible swimming pool or aquatics feature. And we have some projects that are scheduled for design this fiscal year. Again, their design has already been accounted for as far as the $10.93 that would be projected at the end of this fiscal year. However, as the next slide will discuss, their construction costs, which would come in fiscal year '27 and beyond, needs to be accounted for, and that is the West Side Dog Park, the pump track, South Park design, South Point Park design, as well as a possible splash pad. So just kind of dive into the numbers a bit, because I think a really important aspect of this project is identifying our strategic use of the Park Development Fund. We want to accomplish this project with Colorado, but we also want to make sure that we're able to do other projects that are desired, as well as just position ourselves to be able to address future needs as well. So what you see in this bar graph here is to say that the Colorado Ballpark is certainly a huge investment out of this fund. We're projecting these other construction costs to kind of give us a little bit of a baseline to project off of, so South Point Basin Park, about $850,000, again, that would be for construction, West Side Dog Park, about $500,000, and the pump track, about $700,000. What I don't account for is, of course, the legislatively specified grant, $1 million for Colorado, as well as we're in process for a grant for the pump track to have $177,952 in reimbursable amounts. So there is, is to say that there is some funding coming back into this, that those, both of those are reimbursement grants, which means we'll expend that money and then issue our evidence of completing that, and then we'll receive checks back from the state for reimbursement. So just with these projects, we're looking at about $15 million worth of work. Again, we have a projected in balance of $10.93. And another project that's not highlighted here is the splash pad, which we put in funding for this year as far as design and surveying goes. However, that's a really difficult project to project out expense-wise, because it really depends on the location, and I don't think that we're quite in a position to say which location we're going to go for, as well what site improvements there may be there. There are some compliance-related aspects to a splash pad, things like restrooms, along those lines, there's different hose outlets, things like that, that you have to have. There's also just associated site improvements, things like parking, things like fencing, whether or not you were to have another play amenity next to it to service for the non-seasonal months. So there's, it's a project that can really vary in cost, and I guess it's to say that even with these other projects accounted for, we want to make sure we have space to do other projects that we may have interest in accomplishing. Going a little bit more detail on the Colorado Ballpark financing option, so again, we'll have a proposed $13 million projected budget for the project. That includes the $1 million legislatively specified grant. Remaining funds would need to be financed, would be $12 million. We are seeking the LWCF grant, which is due in August. That grant awards up to $6 million with a match, so if you ask for $6 million, then you have to provide $6 million. In this case, that's a perfect match for us as far as the $12 million, so we'll likely be requesting the maximum request for that grant. But if we are unsuccessful in that, we did apply for a grant in March, the ORLP grant. Unfortunately, due to federal changes, that funding was placed on pause, so that grant program was placed on pause, so we have not gotten a response as far as that grant goes. There are other grants that we're also pursuing as well, but for right now, if we were to look at internal sources, the Park Development Fund would be the primary source of funding for us to look at. We provided in the staff report some financing options. They include 10, 20, and 30-year repayment periods and $13,7 million and $3 million loan amounts. And so what we're proposing here is essentially to look at these financing options and start to really think about what direction we want to take this item financing-wise. This would be repaid by the Park Development Fund, so this is not an impact to the general fund or bond or anything along those lines. This would be a private loan that would be repaid by operating income, essentially revenue from the Park Development Fund. When we look at the project, what our staff recommendation is, is to utilize the $1 million legislatively specified grant, and we'd also like to utilize $5 million from the Park Development Fund. Again, there's a $10.93 million projected reserve in that fund, which would, the remaining funds would be able to not exhaust that fund, as well as accomplish those other projects. We'd like to secure a $7 million private loan repaid by operating income from the Park Development Fund, and that would be under a 20-year repayment period. And just looking at what that would look like is that would be an annual payment of $538,250 estimated on an annual basis. The annual Park Development Fund operating income, again, essentially revenue, would be, it has a five-year average of $951,000 per year. So we're pretty healthy on that front in terms of repayment. The Park Development Fund, again, it's from the impact fees, which would be from residential development. So going back to, say, just to be upfront, going back to, say, 2014, 2012, there was likely $0 coming in. So if there's no housing, we're not collecting revenue. However, the last, really about 10 years, we've been collecting pretty regular funds, and again, I just want to emphasize that the last five years, the average income has been $951,000. And again, we are looking at future housing development. So that's really the basis of where staff is coming from on terms of their recommendation, and you can see that pie chart there really makes up what is proposed. Again, if we were to secure, say, the LWCF grant, that would change things dramatically in a good way, right? To be able to provide the $6 million from the grant funding, and then we would either use $6 million from the reserve or possibly a private loan if staff, if council felt comfortable with that. Again, the staff report runs through other options as far as loan amounts, as well as repayment terms. So for example, if we were requesting the $7 million on the loan amount, you could do a 10-year repayment of $836,556 and still come in underneath that average operating income, or you could draw it out to a 30-year repayment. You could also look at loaning more or less, and I want to repeat that we're not asking council to make a decision on that tonight. We're presenting these financing options. We want to be upfront about the direction of the project and what costs can be and how we think we can prudently get this project done. I think it's, one thing that I'm really proud of as far as Parks and Rec goes is that this project and what we've done doesn't impact the general fund, doesn't request bonds. I think a lot of cities would be really envious of that position that we're in in terms of being able to knock out a big project like this. So I was very thankful to Gary and Minnie and everybody that helped put together these numbers and helped support this presentation. And with that, I'll take any questions or comments.
I'm going to ask, with that one grant funding you're looking for, that you have to do the half of the match. I know there's no way to know if you're going to get it for sure, but do you have any idea that it doesn't look good that we could get something like that, or have we been successful in the past with that kind of, or is this a brand-new thing we're trying?
This is the first time that we'll have applied to the LWCF grant. I did talk to a consultant firm, Townsend Affairs, the public affairs group that does do grant applications regularly, and I'm sure they're submitting it for multiple agencies on this particular grant. And they felt confident that this was worthwhile to submit for, primarily because of the area that the Colorado Ballpark project is in. They use different standards for the eligibility on the grant and different point factors based off of that, but based on their community fact finder, the Colorado Ballpark qualifies via income. It's about $11,000 underneath the income level. It's about 11,000 underneath the, the income level. It does not score maximum points, however, it's the second highest scoring that you can get in that category. That's just one category within that, criteria of that grant. So am I confident that we're going to get that grant? I'll, I'll never say that I'm confident unless they, you know, shake my hand and say, here it is, or, you know, whatever, Missouri presents us a check at a ballpark. However, you know, I'm, I'm confident in applying for this. We've applied for grants at, say, Pataco Park before, and it, you know, I, I felt like it was a good project and a good effort to try to pursue those. However, Pataco isn't a much different census tract in half-mile radius than Colorado Ballpark is in terms of disadvantaged criteria. So I, I feel like, you know, we're going to see how the process goes. Before we're expending large amounts of money and possibly before we even bring back another financing item, we would probably hear back from that because I'm going to guess we'll probably hear back from that sometime this winter as far as results go. It's hard to say because the state sometimes they'll end up extending.
And that's a, that's a state grant?
Yes.
And they haven't, they haven't pulled back from those grants, huh?
No, and this one's not based off of federal funding. The ORLP grant, which was the grant we applied for in March, was a grant that we applied through, through the state, but it was federal funds that supported the program. And that was, federal changes caused the pause to that.
Okay. Questions?
Yes, Mayor. Do we, excuse me, have you had a chance to talk to anyone from that agency at all about how much money is in that total pot of money for handing out grants?
If you gave me a mon, I can grab it probably because it's a, it's a pretty quick answer. It's a large, it's a large grant overall. I would guess a couple hundred million available, but I can confirm.
In this year's budget, in the FYI?
Yes. The LWCF grant is a regular grant. I believe it's available, I want to say every two years. It's a land-water conservation, sorry, I think they're going to help me out. Land Water Conservation Fund is where it's, the acronym stands for. I think Minnie and Stacy will.
I'm just wondering for, if it's a state fund, what they've allocated in, in the budget for, for the FYI 25, 26?
I'm not sure if we'll be able to find that number just yet, but they should have a program.
And while they're looking at that, if, if we get that grant, and that's the managing grant, where if, if we come up with 6 million, they will give us 6 million, so that brings it to 12 million total. So that would mean it would be a smaller amount of money that we would potentially have to finance, which would be about a million dollars.
Yeah, or, yeah, or theoretically, we could just use the reserve. It would depend on council direction.
Okay. If we didn't get it, and we have to go the route of borrowing money, I can't remember which one you stated, but it was, I thought I heard something about 530,000 a year repayment. I don't know if that's a 30-year loan. But your projection is that the Park Development Fund, which is based on hopefully how many houses get built here in Los Angeles, is going to be about 972 annually?
Yeah, so it's an option that I, that staff is recommending is the 20-year loan repayment period with a $7 million loan. That would have an annual payment of 538,000 and change. And as you mentioned, the average operating income for the Park Development Fund the last five years has been 951,000.
So that means the 538 comes out of the 972.
Exactly.
Which leaves, what, round three? And what, what, how much were you looking at possibly using out of that fund right now to help with this park?
Yeah, out of the reserve, which is projected to have an ending balance of 10.93, we would be using 5 million.
Five, okay.
Again, if we were to get that grant, then maybe we reevaluate that.
So, you know, I, I tend to be more conservative of the, you know, financial thinking here. What would it be like if we would maybe some of these other projects not, you know, do away with them, but maybe delay them a little bit longer to give us more money to get this park going in case we don't get the grant and to help us reduce the amount of money that we have to finance to build the park? Because this, you know, with all the parks that we've refurbished in Los Angeles, you know, the, the one over on Seventh Street, which is land we don't even own, in my opinion, this should have been the first park that we tackled because it's property that the city does own. It's our own park. So I'm just wondering, could there be another formula that we could look at to use more of this money to reduce the length of time that we have to pay it back and then maybe delay some of these other projects that you have on the books to do?
Yeah, so certainly, that's an option. Like I said, we do have the South Point Basin Park, the West Side Dog Park and Pump Track scheduled for design this fiscal year, which means they're, they're, they're still, you know, they got to go through that process as far as community engagement, design approval, conceptual approval by city council, and then entering that engineering phase and bid documents and all that. So there, there's still a ways out, farther out than just fiscal year 26 in terms of construction. So that, that is an option to look to see how we can reduce that. I would still say that they, that, you know, a financing option would, would be needed under the current proposal budget for Colorado Ballpark, simply because we're estimating about $12 million impact after the $1 million grant. But certainly, we could try to, I guess you'd say, buy more time to, to do that. I think what staff has recommended here is just an effort to try to accomplish as much as, as we can in terms of providing amenities while still looking at options that allow for that and allow for that without, say, risking the long-term aspect of it. But certainly, there's the 10, 20, 30-year periods.
And also in the financing, there would, there would also be a, no prepayment penalty because it'd be a, a loan and not bonding. So there would be able to, we would be able to, if more money came in into the impact fund, we'd be able to pay it off sooner and alleviate some of that interest cost. And so that just gives us time to be able to do that in the future years with the budgeting process and be able to budget a little bit further or, or even bring some of those projects forward and not empty out the fund. And there's also a requirement to spend some of those funds per a requirement of impact fee fund usage, that we're coming up to the five-year limit on some of those monies. And so we do need to spend that 5 million. So if we do get the grant, it would be in our best, in our benefit to go ahead and spend the money that's in the impact fund and not finance that part of it.
And, and again, I, I understand that. I'm just, I always look at two sides of the fence, and that is, this is the good side, but there, there could also be a downside where we may have less houses that are built, and so that impact fund gets reduced. And then we've already obligated monies out there to do other projects, and where do we go from there? If, if that never happens, then it's a good thing. I, I guess I'm, I'm hoping that both sides are weighed, and I, I'd really like to get this Colorado park done and out of the way. And if it means putting an extra million dollars in there instead of borrowing five, borrow six, that, that reduces what we, I mean, instead of using five, use 6 million, and that would reduce what we would have to borrow and then continue to build up that impact fund. But the cost of payment, paying back would be less, and so the, the Park Development Fund would be less impacted.
Or the other option is go like 25-year loan.
There's a 30, I, it's a 30-year, but I'm sure.
There's an option to do a 25, a 26.
Because I, I know a lot of times we would look at the life of a park, and you'd sort of borrow half-life. So if it's a 50-year park, you borrow 25 years, that's was, I mean, that's not set in stone, but that's how a lot of cities do it.
I think the original design of our, the proposal that we have tonight, and I agree with you, I don't like to have as much debt as we can, can avoid debt, that'd be nice. It was, I think we took away from the last meeting, and we talked about it at staff level, was we wanted to be able to use some of this Park Development Fund, but yet hold some back for other projects, just because I thought that's what we heard at the, at the dais. We are totally open for other alternatives, and we can always come back with some of those alternatives as we refine this process. We're just excited to bring it to you and keep it moving forward.
So my last question, and it's just because I don't know what it is, what is a pump park?
Yes, absolutely. Councilmember Sanders might be the one to ask, but it's a bicycle, a pump track, I think, think you're pumping your pedals. And it's like a, there's different designs, but there's like a wave train.
There's, there's one in Corcoran that's, they had like a world, like a trials, like a, an event that was for the World, World Series of Pump Track. It's like BMX. It's, it's really cool. There's, I sent you a YouTube video. It's, it's cool, and it's kind, it's getting really popular. There's not many of them in California right now, so it would be.
It's really neat. I'd like to see that, too. Any questions of anybody else? I, I want to see it moving forward. I like what you brought forward. I know we're not really making the decision, but I want to see us moving forward, but, and I know our table, your table's pretty full with everything, but I think we need to go to a design for a Splash Pad, at least start the process, and I think we need to start looking at swimming pool. I mean, that might be further years out and everything, but if we just keep on waiting and waiting, then, you know, wait, you know, that was a pretty strong theme at, at this park, our park-side chat was swimming pools. And a lot, there's a lot of children in this town that do not know how to swim, and we probably have the most canals in any city around because of Henry Miller. So we want them swimming in the swimming pool. So I just don't want to take that off the table. We need to look at where we're going to put it, what we're going to do. I was sort of surprised at the cost of a Splash Pad, but then when you said parking lot, restrooms, then I, I understood which, why you had that figure.
To be, to be clear, if you drop the Splash Pad, and that's probably, it's maybe a 700,000 dollar expense.
Yeah.
It's just, you start adding surrounding amenities, including parking lots or fencing or ADA pathways, bathrooms, all that, it starts to add up.
And again, a lot of that stuff was the reason why we bought the railroad trailway way back when, was to start putting these amenities on there, along with housing, multiple family housing, to, to populate the downtown area, which would then entice more businesses to come downtown, hopefully more restaurant-style businesses. And I, a Splash Pad, swimming pool, parking lot for the plaza, I could see start incorporating all that, but I just don't want that taken off the table. I'd like to see it on a list somewhere. And I know we talked about that, but that's off the table. So anyway, direction from the councils to keep on moving forward?
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay. Just before we close out, just want to be clear, was there any comments on the conceptual side of it? I'd like to move forward in, in looking at that with the, the air commission with county and what we can do as far as that side of things. Of course, the financing aspect will, will certainly be bringing back. I'm sure, it sounds like multiple times maybe for review, but I wanted to kind of get any comments that you may have on the conceptual side.
So the only thing is, so we took the Splash Pad out of that. I like how you incorporated the grassy area. I think that is something that would be needed for the skate park, for, you know, staging area before ballgames and stuff like that. But then if you add a Splash Pad there, it's like 700,000 instead of 3 million.
It escalates the, the cost. I think some of the logic that went toward, towards the Splash Pad there was that you already have a parking lot, you already have the restrooms. The downside is what a lot of the council members had mentioned in February, which I had mentioned earlier in the presentation.
Right. So we could look at another park that already has a parking lot and restrooms, too.
I think, I think the only thing I, I have a question on, just to make sure. The landscaping along Colorado on the west side, well, budding the park, is, is it going to be sustainable enough? Because I know we have a lot of winds. We were out there for the check presentation, that was kind of an unusual one. But I have had residents contact me about a lot of dirt coming over into their homes, and they can't open their doors and windows. So are we going to have enough protection and landscaping there to maybe mitigate a little bit of that problem?
Yeah, we can certainly look at that. That's not really something that we would probably address as far as like the conceptual level of, of this, but it's, it's a, it's a good comment because I was out there with you, and I think every, all the, I think we all went home and had to shower after that because we were caked in, in dirt and everything, and once the kids start kicking it up, it starts flying everywhere. So I can imagine it going across the street, not to mention, Los Angeles is dusty in general already, so you, you compound that. So, yeah, but I do think on-site there, as far as the landscape, part of this project's going to have to involve a lot of soil amendments. The soil's not, not great on-site there, so we can look at that as part of, of that as we revamp.
Yeah, I see, I see, well, these little round things, I assume they're trees. So, you know, I, I guess I would just suggest that maybe we have some lower-level hedging or something that's going to fill in to, to help that easterly wind keep from inundating the homeowners on Colorado.
Yes, thank you.
Right. Is it going to, the ballparks, I know you said design, but is there a way to have them water down the ballparks before they start playing?
I, I think they typically do. It's just once the game gets going.
Yeah, just, well, the dirt's robed so bad, like you said. Okay. Okay, I think you got direction? Anything else from us?
I think we're good, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. And now we'll go to Los Angeles Solid Waste Disposal Site Landfill Closure Options and Cost Analysis, and we go back to Joe for this, too.
Thank you, council. I'll, I'll say with, with no offense to our consultant here, Sarah Stevenson from BSK, as well as James Moore from the Regional Waste Authority, I think he's the director, I believe his position is in the audience here, but no offense, this is not as, as fun of a project as the Colorado Ballpark, but it's very important to us and has been a longstanding project for us with the city. And so similarly, we're going to present a couple options for you tonight and walk through some financing options as well, and hope to get a direction from the city council tonight. So just walking through this, for those unaware, the landfill that we are referencing tonight is the eastern space along, at the Ag Sports Complex where that, that orange space is. It's all one big parcel, including the Ag Sports Complex. However, this, this space that we're looking at tonight is that 35 acres. 11.6 acres of it is, was used as, as a waste site, and that's where, what triggers our conversation tonight, and I'll show you a bit more of a map later in the presentation on that. Waste materials on-site include disposal of things along the lines of plants, tree cuttings, concrete, asphalt, there's some glass out there, I know, brick, things along those lines. And this, the space requires closure for the state regulations, and there's two primary options that staff is presenting tonight, which is the clean closure as well as the cap closure, and a bit more of a description of the waste on-site there. The soil thickness varies from 1 to 5 feet as a cover on top of it. However, the waste itself reaches as deep as 22 feet on-site. BSK's been helping us since 1991 on this, and Sarah Stevenson has been on this for, for quite some time. She's, again, our, our consultant from BSK, and very grateful to her for helping me understand this complicated topic tonight. Our timeline, yeah, again, it's been, it's been operated as a, as a landfill site from 1955 until 1994. From 1955 until 1973, it was primarily a burn dump for municipal waste. From '73 to '94, it was more along the lines of green waste, concrete, asphalt. We've been talking about closure on-site since at least 1991. And again, as time has gone on, we've really identified two primary options, the clean closure and the cap closure, and I'll explain what those are in a few slides here. The last time this item went to council was in 2022. It was a bid, a bid rejection for a cap closure. The staff report references it, but the, the loan bid for the, the cap closure came in more than double the estimate and above the budgeted amount at the time, and so the bid was rejected. And, you know, I want to talk about as well, this, this project being, having gone on for so long, we've, we've certainly gone in different directions with it over the years, and it's. years, and it's important. We want to get direction from council tonight for a lot of reasons, but one of them includes being able to submit our materials to the state, just to remain in compliance and to further along this project. So closure options, I mentioned them, the clean closure and the cap closure, and I'll talk about the pros and cons of each, and we'll talk about the financing as well. But the clean closure is a full, full waste removal, so just as you'd, you'd think it would be. This is going to end up requiring about 130,000 tons of infill material, so it's, it's a lot of material. On the option two side of things, it would be the cap, which is a prescriptive cover. What's being proposed is a asphalt cover, probably about two inches in thickness, as well as some monitoring that will be required. The waste would remain in place and you would have an impenetrable, penetrable cover on top, so you wouldn't be able to puncture that, and we'll talk about that during the, the pros and cons of each option. So the cap, continuing that, is also referenced as the final cover option. This option has a lower upfront cost, about 6.7 million. It utilizes an existing plan with, with approvals. We'd have to do a little bit of updating, but we, we, again, did put that out to bid. There is sufficient cash in the reserve, and I'll, I'll talk about that in a moment to, to cover most of the expenses. The cons include you are looking at about 30-plus years of, of monitoring. That's at about 90,000 a year, which amounts to 2.7 million. You also have the biggest con being land use restriction. So going back to what I was talking about, as far as not puncturing that asphalt, you're not going to be able to put structures, fields, really just development through there. It's, it's going to really be primarily used as a parking space or other creative solutions to about 11 acres of capped asphalt. The city also must retain ownership indefinitely for the project. And to look at where the cap is, and this is really just a broad estimation, but you're, you're looking at the top north area of that being capped, as well as that west section as well being capped. And again, this is not intended to be a conceptual design, I'm just referencing the space so you have an idea. There is an existing drainage basin there on site as well, and then the remaining space within that undeveloped property. You'll also, I'll highlight since we're on this page here, you know, you see future developments maybe going to the north or to other areas of this project, and so you would be limited as far as, say, like Del Rio, which I know it gets cut off there, but Del Rio Road there going, it looks like north-south. Going to the clean closure option, this would be, again, removal of all the landfill, fill waste, your, basically your contamination on site. Yeah, so you're, you're really allowed full site redevelopment. There's some limitations, you know, you start looking at a school site, it's, it's going to be very complicated to the point where staff isn't considered an option. But most other developments would be able to be redeveloped on site. You may be able to eliminate or greatly reduce long-term monitoring, which again has an associated cost. Another pro would be the property could be sold off to offset the, the project cost, and the long-term environmental liability is, of course, reduced. Cons being that it does have a higher upfront cost, 16.8 million, and again, I'll get into some of the financing on, on these, these two options. It does require a new landfill cell out at Billy Wright. We had an estimated date of 2026, but I certainly don't want to speak to that with Director Moore here. It's to say that there is going to need to be some coordination with, with his team over there and the timeline that's associated with it. And there is potential, of course, for additional waste discovery during excavation. I understand that we've been doing years of testing out there to meet state compliance, however, you can't possibly test every inch of soil out there. So there is, of course, areas that as you move forward this project, you may run into additional issues out on site. So going into the financing comparison, looking first at the, the cap option, you're looking at a total cost estimated at 6.75 million. We also wanted to reference again that, that 2.7 million monitoring over 30 years, which again is 90,000 a year. That, that amounts for 9.4 million, but again, that monitoring would be over a 30-year period. The clean closure costs, has a total cost of 16.82 million, which would require 6.75 million in financing. There is a, a reserve within that fund that we would need to utilize in full. Solid waste, the solid waste fund is, is primarily allocated towards this particular project. There are some other aspects there, like equipment purchases, along those lines. However, as part of the rate, the landfill closure has been identified, that built that, that reserve. Potential land sale could reduce the net cost, and so thanks to Stacy's help, we were able to secure a rough estimate for that price. So raw residential, the average price for raw residential land per acre is $250,000. So if we were to sell 25 acres, that would amount to 16, be, amount to 6.25 million. If we were to sell 35 acres, that would be an amount of 8.75 million. Again, those are estimated numbers, and we have a, a clean closure process that we certainly have to go through first before we get to that point, but it's to say that clean closure certainly has the benefit of a lot more flexibility in terms of future ability to control that land, whether we sell it, develop it, or any other option that we may have. So getting into our financing plan, similar to the Colorado Ballpark project finance, thank, thank you to Minnie and her team, provided numbers for us for a private loan to be repaid by the solid waste fund, which again, happy to not be proposing to impact general fund or, or any other fund. It would be just the solid waste fund. The options are 10, 20, or 30-year options for, for repayment. The solid waste fund has about 10.07 million available in its reserve. And so again, if we go back to these, the prior slide, you'll see the cap would have about 6.75 million dollar impact on that reserve, and the 2.7 million dollar monitoring would be impacted moving forward over those 30 years on the remaining reserve. And the clean closure would be, would require additional financing. So going into the staff recommendation, staff is recommending to pursue a clean closure option due to long-term cost efficiency and redevelopment flexibility, really that ability to control what we're able to do with that property. And again, you know, costs escalate, so try to take care of this the best we can. Now is staff's recommendation, we recommend utilizing, financing through a private loan to be repaid over a 20-year period from the solid waste fund. The annual payment is $538,844 under that, that proposal. And again, that's estimated, we would bring that item back financing-wise to council. We're really just trying to get direction tonight. The solid waste fund operating income covers that debt service, and we would also need to coordinate with the Billy Wright landfill for hauling timing on that project, as well as, of course, the state to get those plans approved and moving forward. And we would need direction from you to, from the city council to pursue the closure option in the financing term, what that looks like, what staff is open to, to council's direction, and I'll conclude with, with that. I want to repeat that we do have one of our consultants in the crowd as well to help me with some of the technical stuff, but really, again, like to thank Gary, Minnie. Mr. Vaughn was also attending our, our meetings, I think probably just about everybody on staff I think I asked questions of and helped of, so very much appreciate it because not necessarily my background, but happy to be moving this item forward.
Sir, would you like to come up? I, I think I, I want to have, ask you a few questions. It won't be too hard. I basically want to know what your thoughts with the state? I know we've been approved for clean cap back and forth over the years. You think would be a problem, because right now it's approved for a cap, correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so would it be a problem in your eyes if we decided to change to a clean closure?
No.
You think it'd just be a process of getting?
With the last time, they redid the water, our discharge requirements, they put a provision in there that you can do a prescriptive cover or clean closure.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Now, does anybody else have a question for? Thank you. See, that wasn't too bad. Mr. Vaughn, you, how about adding another, you want to come up and just ask, see what you have to say about the waste, the solid waste plants, Billy Wright?
Sure. Joe and I had a quick conversation. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is James Moore. I'm the director of the Regional Waste Authority here in Merced County. Been here about two and a half years, been in solid waste for over 30 years now. So I've seen several of these clean closure projects done. They do tend to work out successfully. As Joe said, you know, there's a little unsurity of what you're going to find once you start digging it, but, you know, remarkably, despite the horror stories, we don't typically find really bad stuff in there. We know this was a burn dump, we've seen that before, so you have some ash, potentially some lead. We do sampling, or the contractor does sampling as they excavate the material. As we said, the, the timing issue, we are currently constructing a new cell over at Billy Wright. We started construction in April, we hope to finish in October. Again, it's one of those timing things. We have to have the cell completed and ready for waste, and then winter hits. So we have to sit and wait till it dries out before we can get in there and place waste. We do have some concerns, looking at the numbers, Sarah and I have talked, we've known each other quite a while. You know, the amount of tonnage that might be there, we're going to have to coordinate, you know, how many trucks come in a day? That may affect your performance period. You know, the plan from 2015 called for about 140 workdays or something? Hundred, yeah, 130. But if we're looking at much more tonnage, that's going to stretch that out, or we have to increase. So, you know, those are issues that we can work through, whether we have to have additional staffing or equipment at the landfill to accommodate that. Those are certainly things we're open to discussing. I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other. The one thing I would add to Joe's comments is, you know, that worry about the 30-year post-closure period. I'm actually teaching yesterday, today, and tomorrow a class for landfill managers throughout the state, and one of the things we've talked about is that 30 years is a minimum. It's not a guarantee that you walk away after 30 years.
If you cap close.
If, if you cap close. So, yeah, there's, there's a potential that that's in perpetuity.
Yeah.
And so, again, you know, $90,000 plus escalation forever and ever. So just my two cents worth.
Right.
Any other questions?
I have one, Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, will we only be able to use Billy Wright to, once excavating, to bring that material there, or will we be allowed to use Highway 59?
You could use Highway 59. That is going to drive up your cost for transportation. And it'll limit the, you know, the, the great thing about having Billy Wright so close is the contractor can probably, you know, use a fleet of 10 or 15 trucks, and they might be able to make three cycles a day. If you're going to Highway 59, maybe they can only do two cycles a day. So it's going to stretch it out. But that, that is some options. We talked about earlier in the week in discussions with staff about the potential of taking waste to Highway 59. We do have more capacity out there. Again, it's just an issue of how does that affect your haul cost as part of the contract?
So the, the money for the annual monitoring for 30 years, who gets that money?
You pay it to a contractor that's doing that monitoring, a consultant, and there's laboratory fees.
Does any of that go to the state of California?
No.
No, just to the contractor? So it's, it, it kind of sounds like, you know, our legislators are thinking about making these capped type processes be in perpetuity, just to make sure that it stays capped and nothing breaks.
Right, yeah, it's, you know, the, the science behind landfills right now is, we're basically creating a dry tomb. We want to encase the waste, you put a cover over it, you prevent moisture from getting in, and the waste stabilizes. But the issue is if that cap ever gets broken, whether through seismic activity or major disasters, then you reintroduce water to it, and that material starts decomposing again, which is going to cause additional leachate and additional landfill gas that you then have to deal with. So.
That's good to know.
Yeah, you know, typically, right now, California, there is no ability in the regulations to get out of that post-closure period. It's, it's kind of an ambiguously defined when the waste no longer presents a hazard. You know? Most of our modern, subtitled D landfills date only back to 1991, so we have just in the last couple of years had facilities hit that 30-year point, and none of them have been allowed to stop monitoring. So that's kind of our reality in, in the industry.
Thank you. I've been very impressed since I've joined MCAG again this year. You're very knowledgeable, and I appreciate you being here tonight.
Certainly.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Gary, you have something?
I just want to make a comment on the transportation costs. It is a surprisingly large portion, if you look at page 226 of your packet, you'll see just a breakdown for the clean closure cost. The transportation, just the tipping fee, I should say, for the 135 approximately thousand tons, that tipping fee is about 6.7 million dollars just getting it out to Billy Wright Road. And so you add those transportation costs of actually getting out there, you're looking at closer to, oh my gosh, what is that, 11? Is that a four? Yeah, that's a, it's a, it's a significant cost to this project, just hauling it off and getting the tipping fee, which MCAG is a great partner of ours. We're going to try and do all the partnering that we can to keep that cost in mind, but it's a, it's a significant cost.
Thank you. Well, my thoughts, I'll start off unless you have any more questions. My thought, I'd, I'd love to see a clean closure. I think, as Moore just said, if there's an earthquake and we crack open a cap closure, we're going to be going back and starting to do the whole process over again. Plus, I, I don't know if we ever have any plans of putting houses there, I don't, or selling any land. That's not a good idea. But I like clean closure. But I do have a question for our Director Moreno. This fund that we have the money in, if this, so does this fund run until this, the money is paid off, the yearly money is paid off, then that fund goes away, we stop going? That fund is forever? So it's?
Correct.
It's a separate enterprise?
It's, it's an enterprise fund, so just like the water and the wastewater.
But it's just for?
So solid waste.
But it's just for the closing of this?
No, no, no. It's for all solid waste. So it's also for sweeping and garbage, and so there's a rate that we charge for the services, and this was part of that rate.
Isn't there a, isn't, didn't a previous council put a fee established to closing this, this site somehow raised?
There's a component of the, of the rate.
Am I wrong or right?
No, but I think something was established when we were considering closure.
Okay.
That accumulated the fee.
So that fee would go on forever, too?
Yeah, I believe it's based on the, the rate, it's based on, it's, the rate has to be based on what the needs of the, the city or the needs of the city related to that, and so the landfill is obviously a large aspect of that. I don't think that they quite estimated the size of the costs that, by 2025 standards. So in terms of the future, let's say after this clean closure is, is completed, and the rate would continue, however, it may be reduced or, or maintained based off the needs of that time.
So once we, once we are done with the clean closure, or once we're done with whatever we're going to do, then we do a rate study that then would?
The 218?
That, that would put whatever our future CIP would be as the component, so, but the, the actual fund, it's in, it's in perpetuity.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, questions, comments? Any big ones?
So I just want to understand the, what's going on with the map, the difference between the cap. So do we have to cap this whole thing, 35 acres of it, or just 11 acres?
No, just the 11.6 acres, I believe, is the cap, and that's primarily along that northern portion, and then as well as a little bit of the western.
So if we were to cap that, does, can we still not do any development on the entire site, or just on the cap part?
The remaining, the non-contaminated aspect of it can be developed, however, However, keep in mind, again, that um there would be a drainage basin on site as well as um limited access in terms of those roads punching through to other access points as well. Um you would be, obviously, you wouldn't be able to do anything more than what I had talked about as far as the cap goes in terms of puncture.
Where, where the cap is?
Yes.
So, and the drainage basin is there specifically because, so if this is cleaned, then we don't need the drainage basin anymore?
No, the drainage basin is needed, um I believe, for that neighborhood there, to what drains into that. Okay.
So that's there regardless?
And the Saint Francis Basin will even support some additional um housing coming in at North Point as well. So it's gonna be needed. If anything, it will likely be needed to be expanded in the future.
I mean, the only reason I ask is because if we, if we have any idea of what we're gonna do with this land, like if we, say, we wanted to build a park, a big regional park, and we needed a big parking lot anyways, and we're gonna have a big, we need a big strip of asphalt for a parking lot, then we could save ten million dollars and put a parking lot there and have all this other land that we could still develop. Like, it's just, I'm just trying to, you know, think outside the box here about.
Yes.
If we, if we know what we're gonna do with the land, then maybe we can figure out what the best.
Yeah, there's definitely creative solutions. I know people have talked about making it some sort of event space to allow for farmers' market-type vendors to be able to set up along that asphalt. Um and, and I, it's, like I said, I think there's certainly creative solutions to it. I think, you know, um solutions such as, like, you know, your pickleball courts wouldn't work. You gotta be able to puncture the asphalt for that. So it really needs to be some sort of parking-related solution.
For that strip, yeah.
Yeah, for that, for that section.
You couldn't even put a bumper, a car bumper.
Yeah, you couldn't put a tree or anything along with it.
A big, a big plain thing of asphalt is all you get.
Yeah, our favorite rectangle of asphalt.
No fencing.
Yeah, okay. I just, you know, just have to ask.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Sixteen million dollars is a lot of money, but we, you know.
That's an estimate, too. Could be less.
Sure.
Or they could find something.
And you don't wanna, you wanna be able to use the land for something. There's not a lot of land that we have around that side of the city.
Yeah, I, I'd love to, like you said, regional, even keep on expanding the support.
And we're talking about pools and splash pads and things like that. Like, it's a great spot because it's got softball parks and pickleball courts and everything else there.
Yeah. Okay, any questions on, to the right? Okay, so uh do you, well, we need a motion on this?
Need some directions.
I, direction to clean? Clean closure? Okay, you got four clean closures. Motion, and let's somebody make a motion. You changed your mind on this. Okay, motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion um in regards to item ten on the agenda regarding the Los Banos solid waste disposal site, landfill closure, to recommend to staff that we do a clean closure.
Okay, we motion and second as stated. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you both very much for attending this meeting. Appreciate it and your expertise. Okay, we will move on. We got directions, so we'll move on to item eleven, which is city department reports. And for the first one, we'll start with a community and economic development and community directors, Suzette Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um so I did wanna give a real quick update on some development projects that we have currently underway, um under construction. Uh the first is with Target and Walmart. Uh they're conducting tenant improvements, uh really just to meet updating requirements um for corporate branding. Um so the exterior um for both, they did some uh minor um exterior renovations, just some updating with paint and signage. Um but the interiors where we're seeing uh most of the update occurring um for both stores, and they're both kind of running ironically a, at the same schedule. Um and they're both midway of, of their schedule. Um so we're anticipating still a few more months of those improvements to continue. Um but it's really exciting to walk through both of the stores. You can see the improvement already um and the enhancements um that are, that will be provided in both stores. So very nice. Um the next is on Ono Hawaiian Barbecue and Dutch Bros. Number Two, uh which is um in the Target Shopping Center, which is the Stone Creek Plaza. Uh Dutch Bros. Number Two uh this week has received temporary occupancy, and they're working on their final occupancy uh with the Health Department. What temporary occupancy provides is allows them to train employees, um stock shelves, and get the store ready. Um but uh they don't have clearance yet to serve the public. That will be through final occupancy. And Ono um Hawaiian Barbecue is slated probably about October, November uh to be open. And then I do want to uh let the council know that at the last planning commission meeting um last week on Wednesday, uh two projects were approved, uh which will be moving to the building permit and improvement plan stage next. Um and that was for North Gate Forty-two L L C. That's the northeast corner of uh West I Street and West Pacheco Boulevard. That's about three point two five acres. It's a redevelopment project. So there's three existing buildings, uh Mister Taco, Me and Ed's, and Fernandez Thrift that will be redeveloped, um so demolished, and then a new shopping center will be built there. Um and the, in that particular shopping center, um it consists of uh four commercial buildings. It's a convenience store and a fuel station, um a quick-serve restaurant with the drive-through, and an automated um uh car wash is associated with the fuel station. And then there's a sit-down retail restaurant component also included in that project. The next project is Ventnor's Distributors, and they're located on the northeast corner of Wilmot and Mercy Springs Road. That's about a nine point two acre project site, um so a little bit larger. It consists of a grocery and retail building, a re, two-story retail office building, so retail on the bottom, office space up top, two quick-serve restaurants with drive-throughs, a convenience market cafe with a fuel station, and an automated car wash. Um so we'll be seeing those projects break around here probably maybe six to nine months. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Stacy, and I wanna thank our Chief Reyna, too. He corrected me that I'm supposed to say Dutch Bros., not Dutch Brothers, correct? My, I guess my age was showing. Okay, so I'm glad you said it right. You're much younger than I am. Okay, under Finance, Finance Director Moreno.
Mayor, before we move forward, I just have a question I'd like to ask of Stacy. In, in the remodels for Target and um Walmart, are they adding more, more space? Or for Target, I know when they first opened, they, I think they had a larger grocery store, and they used to have a garden department, and then that was shut down. Are they going to use that space for something specific?
Um they are not expanding their floor print for both um, both stores. Um they are kind of rearranging um where the grocery component, where the grocery location, you know, where their refrigerators and stocking, where that's located. What we are seeing with both stores is that they're really enhancing their um pickup, their mobile order pickup areas, and that's the, what's really the big push with the tenant improvements.
Thank you.
Stacy, I got a question. Who's gonna finish first, Walmart, Target, or Ortigalito Road?
Hmm, that's a good question.
I get hit up with that constantly. I don't know who can answer that question, but, man, people are like, when are you gonna be done? I know it's about end of September now it's got pushed. Sorry, folks. Okay, Finance Director Moreno.
Um I just wanted to update uh council. We had our first video for the campaign to support our local and bi-local and, and, um, and I did wanna remind everybody that if you purchase online, um and this will be part of our next video, um so I'm giving you a little tidbit of it, is that if you just shop online and have it delivered to your home, those tax dollars stay in Los Banos. So if you order any of the retailers, I won't name names, but it gets free delivery, and, um, and it comes to your home, all of those tax dollars stay here. So go and buy order online and have it delivered to your home, and we'll be able to reap the benefit. So that's all for me.
How about you change, when you, is everything going on schedule for being able to service online payments and all that stuff? Besides, you said September, October, maybe we're getting to that new software? That's only planning?
Yeah.
Oh, planning and license, okay.
Yeah, planning and license, and then we're also working with Recreation to get them on our system. So uh we're working really hard to get everything integrated, and uh credit cards are, we're already taking them at all locations.
That's great.
So um we're really working towards a full integration of all of our uh processes.
Okay, I think we found a, a new star for that video. You did a good job. Any questions?
And there is gonna be a Spanish version coming out this week, so look for it. Also by me.
Any questions? Okay. Fire Chief Twala. Chief?
Good evening, everyone. Uh just a few updates. Uh first off, with the Fourth of July, our Fourth of July was a full act quieter, and not to take away from Chief Reyna's thunder, uh really appreciate the efforts that uh his staff from code enforcement, his detectives, and uh his P D staff that were on duty for Fourth of July, uh did an excellent job. Um also, I think their proactive efforts uh were definitely beneficial, and uh we noticed a decrease in our call volume, um at least on the Fourth. Uh although we did, uh, we did have a few fires that night, but it wasn't as many as in years past. So I appreciate that, uh and I appreciate my staff that, well, my extra staff that came in for the Fourth. Um couple of things were, um thanks to Lucy and her team for getting volunteer firefighter recruitment out. So we're recruiting for that, so we're hoping to see that program uh start up again. It's been a couple of years, so looking forward to that. And um our ladder truck is back from some service, and we're working on trying to get that in service. Right now, it's in service training, um and then bringing in uh some tr, uh additional training for the ladder truck itself uh with outside consultants, so. Um but we are, um we're seeing quite the increase in calls, but it's uh, it's been good, and I appreciate the council's support on, on public safety. So, thank you.
Great, thanks, Chief. Any questions? Council? Okay. Okay, City Clerk, Human Resources. You wanna talk a little bit? I know you have some stuff, but let's talk about the election coming up, too.
Um so the special election being held on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five to fill the city council seat that's vacant in District One. The nomination period closed, and there's two candidates, Smithy Perez and Khalid Vary Sanchez are the two candidates. The filing period for qualified write-in candidates is currently open and will close on Tuesday, August twelfth. Um ballots will be mailed to all registered voters in District One, beginning on Monday, July twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-five. Um I know that there's gonna be a drop box here at City Hall, and I'm still trying to find out where the other locations are at. Um the official canvas begins on Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, and they have until September twenty-fifth to um certify the results.
Okay, that's it. Okay, thank you. Any questions? Council, thank you, Lucy, very much. And we'll go to Parks and Recreation Director, Acting Public Works Director, Joe.
Thank you. Um yeah, so Parks Project, so I'll start with them. Uh Shaughnessy Ag Sports Complex Landscape, as well as pickleball are, are ongoing. Um you can kinda see the, the guts of Shaughnessy Park really coming together now. Um we also are putting some wrapping, some finishing touches on our shade structures project. Um so um most recent being, um you can check it out, at Olivera Park, Regency Lot D and Rancho Dos Amigos, Dos Amigos Park. Um so it's adding some shade here for the summer. Um uh we also wanna invite the public out to ribbon cutting for the Sunrise Ranch uh park project um on Saturday, July twenty-sixth. Uh we scheduled it in the evening to try to keep it a little cooler, but um come out with us and just celebrate the, the new park out there. I'm excited about that. Staff has also um put together the rec guide, which um will be in hard copy next week at the community center. Um so always exciting to see that come out. Um on the public works side, um just working on a lot of projects. Um uh Ortigalito is one of them. The Final Kilometer is another. Um met with a lot of uh consultants in the last couple of weeks. Uh one of the bigger ones being the street rehabs, that it looks like that'll be able to go out to bid here um next month, so excited about that. And uh also just wanted to congratulate Mark on uh being Employee of the Month. Mark worked for um Parks previously. Uh so his great work with solid waste, and um I don't think anybody's ever said that he's anything but the, about the hardest worker they know. So um I have a lot of respect for Mark, and I'm really happy to see him get that award. So just again, like to thank all the staff and yes, thank you.
You know what street they're gonna start with? You have any idea?
Um we haven't uh uh set the schedule yet, um but I Street is probably the biggest um uh uh street listed on the, uh this is phase one, uh so we'll have a phase two as well.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Joe. Police Chief Reyna.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um just to tag on to what the chief said, yes, we had a very different Fourth of July holiday season this year. Um so we started planning our Fourth of July holiday season probably back in about May, middle of May. And uh it was different because um we spent significant time focusing on the illegal cells that go on in Los Banos and eventually explode over our heads. And so uh in total, I, I would say we probably confiscated about twenty-eight thousand pounds, maybe a little bit more, of legal fireworks. So those are things that uh you never had to hear, your dogs never had to hear. And um so I've been told that uh people in our community have noticed a little bit of a difference um this, this holiday season. Uh in addition, um on the Fourth of July and the following, and then Saturday, uh we had a number of staff out between police, code enforcement, um dispatchers, supervisors. And uh this year, we wrote during the holiday season, we wrote about eighty-nine citations. When compared to last year, we wrote probably about twenty-five, thirty, about twenty-five citations. So significant increase in citations, uh more accountability, more confiscation. Uh and so we appreciate our partners at the Fire Department for assisting us. Uh we had to move all those fire, those fireworks. They were very heavy, and they helped us to safely store them. Um the animal shelter, it's been um moving along. As you all are aware, the modular structure was delivered. Uh we were waiting on P G N E. You know, that can be a long process. The chief understands that well. When building the police station, it took a long time for P G N E to get there. Can't go to the other P G N E. They kinda hold a market, so you, you're just bound by their schedule. So um so P G N E has been, uh, has been there. They've completed their work. Uh we have our fire system company coming out on Friday. Um and then we have a, we have someone coming on to electrify the actual building, to turn power onto the building. So it has to be done um safe. So we're doing that. We will be working with the city manager on an official grand opening uh where we will have you all there, and we'll invite you all to attend. Um and I think the city manager wants to speak at that event, so. Quick note, um I'm very proud to be able to say that today we completed our sergeant promotion. So we have promoted Sergeant Michael Neal and Sergeant Luis Beltran. So there are new sergeants. Uh they've both been with the department for years. They uh do great work, and they will continue to do great work uh for the city. So very exciting news. Uh one of the great, great things that a chief gets to do is to promote really good staff to continue serving the community. And then the last item is National Night Out is coming. It's gonna be on Tuesday, August the fifth, from six to nine P M. So Tuesday, August fifth, it'll be at the Plaza, as we had last year. If you haven't uh attended one of our National Night Out events, you don't know what you're missing. If you don't make it, you're gonna wish you did. Last year, we won an award uh for our National Night Out event because it was the best in the area. Uh Sergeant Ivan Mendez runs the program, puts together a great show for our community. So um Tuesday, August fifth, from six to nine P M at the Plaza. That's all I have. Thank you.
Chief, before you leave, so every year, I have a drone. I've had a drone for about five years. Every year, I, on Fourth of July, I raise my drone up over my house and take a look what's going on around nine thirty, ten o'clock. going on around 9:30, 10 o'clock. You you said there was a little bit of difference. I would say it was 40% of last year. It was more than cut in half. Last year, I did the whole 360 scan and every inch was illegal fireworks going up in the air and there were just a few pockets here and there. So I commend you and your staff and your force for being proactive and and then with these citations, I think next year you will see a big change in that, too.
Thank you, mayor.
So that takes why, so I really commend you on that.
So mayor, you actually caught me. It was in my notes to talk about drones. So so originally, our plan was not to use drones. There was a few things, there was a reason that we didn't want to do it. We were I was concerned about them being impacted, I was concerned about them landing on homes. But in talking to the staff, we determined that we could, we were going to try and we're going to do it safely. So what we did was we flew our drones over large parking lots like big box stores. And with our drones, we were able to concentrate our efforts. We can use a drone to identify what area of town has the largest concentration. So we were able to divert resources to those areas. And in fact, the drone operators were able to actually record people firing off illegal drones. And then we'd send staff there and of course, they didn't do it, but the video shows otherwise. And then in some instances where the drone was in the area, if staff wasn't available because they were busy, the drone operator was able to talk to them over the loudspeaker, give them their address and tell them, we see what you're doing. And so we were able to stop that activity that way. So we were able to do it safely. We learned a lot of really good lessons so that we can implement this again next year. And all these efforts are just to prevent things, you know, illegal things from happening. God forbid somebody's house burns down. I know the fire department had some fires, but it's all in our efforts to maintain public safety. So thank you for the reminder because it was in my notes to talk about it.
Right. I've seen there, I've seen police forces even using drones now to follow cars that are instead of chasing them.
Yes.
And that's really changing how things are done. I I know that that legislation on speed cameras has now, I think it's passed the subcommittee to go for a vote. So then the cities, because what happened is city weren't getting enough revenue to maintain the cameras, the state was taking everything, but now the city gets the majority of it. So now it'll pay for itself. And I know like San Francisco today brought in 37 cameras on the streets that everybody's speeding on. And and I'm not one to fight, I don't like fining people, I'm not one of those, but when it's safety involved, like 152 and people running stoplights and stuff like that, especially around the schools, you know, that's something to think about in the future, too. You know, because now it's it'll pay for itself.
Chief, got a question. So with all those illegal fireworks, is there any way to use those next year to do our show?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir. You have to be a pyrotechnics operator.
All right.
So there's a bunch of regulations on storing, so technically, we can't store those for a year.
Gotcha.
The fire chief would be in violation.
Well, what about Celebrate Sunset Ranch, you know, pretty soon? Just for you, I know.
So I have a question, chief. Were there any particular pockets within the districts where they were more prevalent than others?
Just depended on the time. So it just depended on the time. There was illegal fireworks in every area of town, every district, every subdivision, and it just depended. Hour to hour, you may have more in Rancho area, then half an hour later, maybe behind Target, it just depended, so. They're all over. Not as much as the year before them.
Absolutely. Okay, thanks, chief, very much. Oh, and when you have the grand opening of the animal shelter, I heard that they all have to bring home an animal, right? Adopted animal?
I have my limit on that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so let's see. Now, yeah, I have public works twice here. Okay, city manager, Gary Breezy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Once again, just another great night for our staff to bring forth a lot of projects. I know we have a lot on the consent agenda, a lot on the agenda. The August 6th meeting will be a similar agenda to this one because there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes and it's all getting accomplished by the folks that are to our left and to our right. So I really appreciate everyone's work that you do every day. You guys are fantastic. You make this city continue to move forward, so I just want to say I appreciate all your efforts and I really enjoy working with y'all. We have a few things for tonight. I do want to say that the two big ones, the Colorado ballpark and the landfill, the financial portion of those, it is not lost on any of us at the staff level that we are stewards of the money for this community and we are always looking to find the most conservative path forward to to be the best steward for that for that dollar of our community. So none of that is lost on us. I see those dollar figures, I go home and I think I sweat a little bit on the way home and I think about it a lot. And so I can assure you that we will move forward with a strategic plan that is is very fiscally responsible to the best of our ability. 152 traffic lights that talk to Caltrans, we've been talking to Caltrans a lot lately about a lot of projects. We will be bringing to you a public workshop and then eventually to the council, a couple of different things, a pioneer project, the vineyard and 165 intersection, but we're going to start with both of those projects. First of all, with vineyard, with a public workshop on roundabouts again, similar to what we did with the Caltrans presentation here, but we want to we want to bring it out to the community and invite the community to participate in that and that'll be in August. So but we'll we'll certainly push that out publicly here soon. But I want to talk about the 152 synchronization project. That is up and running. All of the intersections along 152 through town are all synchronized by way of a wireless system that is monitored by District 10 staff in the Stockton area, I believe. It's just up and running, new if you, in fact, I saw it probably two weeks ago, I was driving into town from the Walmart area and I could have swore probably, I think I was between Fourth, I was west of Fourth, so I could see Fourth, Sixth, Seventh, and I believe 11th Street light and every single one of those lights were green. And I thought, wow, what a what a way to, I mean, that doesn't happen very often. But anyways, the lights are all synchronized now and the purpose between or behind that synchronization is to impact and improve the flow of traffic through town of that 152, those platoons of vehicles that run through 152. So I just want to give you an update on that. It's a continuously monitored situation. They saw some delays in the timing with their clocks and so they've had to update those, but they are working on that. That was a city project from a previous public works director that was funded and directed by the city and has now been turned over to Caltrans. That's a that's a good thing in a lot of ways for the city. Another meeting with MCAG, we meet a lot with a lot of these departments and all of us sit in these meetings, whether it's Zoom or in person, but the 152 San Luis Reservoir Dam Improvement, you'll see that they're building up the, I'll call it the berm, on the southeast side of the dam, excuse me, the dam. In 2029, there will be roadway improvements on Pacheco. That will include, from what we understand, raising 152 up. And it will include closing those roadways down for periods of time. It's going to be a significant project from our understanding in both financially and its impact on our residents or anyone who's driving westbound or eastbound over that Pacheco Pass. So at the staff level, we were talking about being inserting ourselves into a, we're calling it a working group at the county level, where we will be able to be more informed about the project. Still several years away, but it will be coming here at some point. So five years from now, they can look back at tonight and say, hey, you told us about that project. Anyways, I want to say congratulations on the citations rate, I think you said 89? That's the most we've ever done at the city of Los Banos, 89 is a lot of citations. So good work to you and your team there. Chromium 6, my last thing is is Chromium 6 testing of our water. We had to begin that process again back in March. This, we just completed our second round of testing and I'm just here to remind the public that we will be we will be coming out with public notices because our water did test above the maximum level that's allowed by the new state regulations. It's nothing, it's nothing to be, am I going to say to be concerned about? Obviously, it's it's something to be concerned about, but the state is not telling us that we are impacted by our water, they're not telling us to go drink bottled water, the water is still safe to drink and to cook with and to wash with. It's a new regulation and you will learn a lot more from us in the coming week or two because you will all receive a notification for that as a state requirement. The city has prepared a website that has a lot of documentation around Chromium 6. We're not the only jurisdiction in the state that's affected by Chromium 6. There are dozens of different organizations that are affected by it. We will eventually have to introduce a citywide filtration system that removes that Chromium 6 contaminant from our water and that's going to cost our ratepayers some funding. So that's another thing behind closed doors that staff is working with to try and manage that process responsibly, but it's it's coming because it's a it's a new state regulation. So we want to be very open and transparent about it. We're not hiding anything about it. We will be sending out those notices here probably next week. It'll be a mass mailer to all of the residents of our community. We are not the only ones that are impacted. One of our staff members lives in a neighboring community that's already received their exavvalent chromium notice that they're above the maximum contaminant level. So we are doing everything that we can as a staff to help educate and inform the community of that new regulation that'll be coming. And I want to say thank you to the mayor because there is a bill that the city is a cosponsor on, SB 466, that has to do with third-party litigation in regards to Chromium 6 and won't take much more time, but he is testifying in front of a number of committees at the state level, at the assembly level, at the senate level. He's done a very good job representing this community. We all appreciate his help, so. I apologize for taking so much time, a lot going on, but I just want to thank, that's all.
Thank you, Gary. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of those things. Roundabouts, I know some people don't like them, they're afraid of them, they're not used to them. I talked to the mayor, Pat Nagy, I mean, sorry, and Gustine, I'll get it right. And they put their new roundabout in, I think it opened four weeks ago. And yeah, and Gustine, you know, they weren't really fans of it, but he says now, everybody loves it. So I just want to throw that in on the roundabout. The lights, when they first went in sync, I guess, I thought they worked really well and then all of a sudden, things started going haywire and left turns were wrong. I do see it working better now. I you think there'd be a program where they could, hopefully, there's a program that is learning traffic and everything, that'd be nice. And I I wish there was a way they could extend East and West on 152 on like Friday nights and the real heavy traffic times. I don't think that's like rocket science, but hopefully, they can get to that point. And I'll talk about Chromium 6 a little bit on when I get to my my report, but any questions to Gary? Okay, we'll start with Marcus, Marcus, District 3, Marcus Chavez.
Well, first and foremost, there's nothing wrong with the water. It's just another stupid California regulation that unfortunately is going to cost us money, but the water's fine. Anyway, so chief, chief, Department of Public Works, encampment's looking, he's still still looking good, so thank you much for that. And the only other thing I'll leave you with is looking forward to the parkside chat with the mayor, so that'll be coming up sometime soon, you have to be scheduled, but yeah, look to see see the folks out there.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll schedule schedule yours soon. Okay, Mayor Protem, Deborah Lewis, District 4.
Thank you, mayor. Well, I'm going to give a shout out to Sergeant Bowling, who retired this past week after, what, 24 years of service as a chief? It was a wonderful send-off for him and but he's kind of a very reserved type person. He's not very outgoing, but it, you know, I I my heart always goes out to our, what is it, safety staff when when the bell rings and they retire. It's almost like taps for me and it's just a special thing to my heart and but I congratulate him on his retirement. There were some good bowling stories about him and I hope he enjoys his retirement as he moves forward and he does have his fishing plan, so that's at least one thing he could do. And maybe, chief, you can get him back as a as a reserve officer to work for the for the city. I want to thank the Los Banos Elks Club for sponsoring a drive-through tri-tip sandwich meal for to help our Los Banos Police Department Explorers to raise funds for them. I understand it was quite quite a large sum of money that was raised, it was sold out. So for for people in the community who weren't able to buy, you can still write a check and donate it to the explorers through the police department, and that's what I intend to do. And one other thing is that we we didn't have an airborne meeting, we're not going to have an airborne meeting this month because it's our one dark month where we kind of have a vacation from having a meeting. But in our June meeting, the one thing I want to bring out again is the ValleyCAN tune-in, tune-up, where people can go online to ValleyCAN, like C-A-N.org, and find out where these tune-ups are going to be. And it's a drive-through where we funded this organization to help people whose cars are in need of a bit of repair to pass smog. And if it can't be repaired, there's a small amount of money that may be left out there to help them purchase a used or new electric or combination electric gas vehicle. So again, you can go to ValleyCAN.org and it's called Tune-In, Tune-Up. There's going to be one here in Los Banos, but it won't be until next year. So wherever they're having them in the San Joaquin Valley, you can go to them, whether it's in Bakersfield, Fresno, Modesto, wherever. You don't have to go to one that you are a resident of that city, you can go to anyone that's being held. And that's my report, mayor.
Thank you, thank you. And soon, we'll have District 1 giving a report. We'll move to District 2, Evan Sanders.
So first, Chief Reyna, great job on the fireworks. We talked about this, I think, the last council meeting and I felt like you were holding your cards pretty close to your chest and you hope you had a trick up your sleeve and you impressed me. It's way, way better than I expected, really great job. I saw the fireworks seizure and then how many tickets through it, which is awesome. So try to do better next year, though. So I got a few things here. So at the, went to the first meeting at the park, the meet and greet at the park with the mayor and it was nice to see everybody out there. There was some stuff, talking with residents that came up a few times, and I think the one that I heard the most was people complaining about speeding in their neighborhoods. I think, I know we have a speed hump program and I see in the new neighborhoods, they're mostly new neighborhoods seem to just get them right off, like the speed humps are there, but they're not going into the old neighborhoods. And I think I've heard, we've talked about this before, there's there's a fund to put them in neighborhoods and I don't know if it's first come, first served or if somebody's, if we're determining which ones are are most in need of that sort of thing, of the traffic calming measures, but I think that we need to be more proactive about it and possibly have more budget associated with it because it's a problem everywhere, it seems like. I've talked to so many people and I've seen it myself in a lot of places that people just speed so bad up and down the kind of the secondary arterial streets that are in the neighborhoods, like the one right there when we were at the meet and greet, several cars went flying by. Yeah, scripts. And then the other one that we got a letter about, actually, and I was going to bring it up anyways, Ward, Ward is crazy. I walk there every morning and even when school's in and there's people, there's kids walking down the street for school, there are cars that are going over double the speed limit, 50-plus miles an hour. It's a drag strip, they'll stop at the stop sign and then just accelerate top speed. And I see I see PD out there now and then at the end of the road, but it feels like they're just there as a deterrent for people running the stop sign on the corner at Overland there, they're not anywhere that they would actually be able to use. I don't know if we even use radar or anything in town, but something needs to be done on Ward badly. I don't know if we even use radar or anything in town, but something needs to be done on Ward badly. It's, it's really bad there. So those two things, I think traffic calming in general is such a big issue with people I talk to. I think we need to, to think about how much budget we associate with that. So whatever we need to do, I know it's not in the budget this time, but maybe in our mid-year review, we can talk about this a little more. Um, I don't know if we should have staff look into options before then. I'm pretty new to this, you've been doing it for a while, so I'll, I'll leave.
Personally, I think cameras is the answer.
Cameras is absolutely the answer. In fact, sure, I looked into it, it's AV six forty-five, I think.
Yeah.
I don't, I, I didn't look into where it's at with the assembly, but I know it's on like a five-year, it's on year two of a five-year pilot with certain cities. We should definitely be paying attention to that, so we're ready to go as soon as it's legal to do. Um, and like you, I don't like writing fines for people, but I do like not having people speeding through the city. I think having them on Pacheco for the commute hours is, that's an absolute.
Yeah.
Let's see, uh, and then, I guess, kind of along the same lines with, since we're talking about vehicles, abandoned vehicle abatement, I think, is something we need to focus a little more on. I talked to Sergeant Mendez, and I know he has one of his code enforcement offers, officers assigned to, uh, vehicle abatement full-time right now. But it feels like maybe they aren't even able to keep up with it, because, and I, when I talked to Officer, Sergeant Mendez, there's a few places in town, and one was brought up at the meet and greet, uh, where it's just really, really bad. Like, half the cars on the street are cobwebs and dust, and you can see where the street sweeper goes around every week. So maybe, maybe if there's some way we can devote some more resources to it for a little while, just to catch up, and then that one officer who's paid for from that ABA that was in the agenda tonight, it sounds like one officer is more or less paid for with that. But if we can catch up, just because it's, it's pretty bad blight in some areas, and I think it might be little pockets of the city that it's worse than others, but it'd be nice to see that taken care of. I mean, there's, there's cars, I saw driving around the other day to look at some of the, the, the new developments, that there's cars on the street surrounded, dust and cobwebs with wheels missing on jack stands. Like, they've obviously been there for a really long time and are going away soon, so. I think it'd make the city look a lot better if we could deal with that.
I don't mean to get into your space, but many cities will require, once a week, you have to move your car off, you know, the east side of the street, and then in a couple of days. And that stops people abandoning cars that can't drive.
Yeah.
Because then they get ticketed at the street sweeper, and of course, they pick up the garbage too, so.
Yeah.
And a lot of cities do that.
I have a car that I don't drive very much, and it's on the street, you know, two, three weeks at a time, sometimes without moving. So, you know, I, that's probably not supposed to be like that either. It's the cars that are obviously moving now and then. I don't have a problem with it, you know, people commute, but I think that might be an issue, is people drive their cars so much here that when it finally gives up, it just gets parked on the street, oh, I'll fix it eventually, but there it sits. Um, it doesn't, it just doesn't look good for the city. Uh, and then the last thing I want to talk about is our website. I think I'm the only, I, I, obviously not the only person who, who finds our website to be incredibly frustrating. And I, I wanted to talk to somebody on staff about, you know, if somebody's maintaining it, or if we, last time we reviewed it, but turns out, we don't have an IT department or anybody that is really in charge of that, so unless, maybe Joe wants another hat. But, um, I've been in IT for twenty-three years, and I would, I'll, I'll volunteer my time and my experience to help with something like this, if we want to do it. But it's really difficult to deal with. There's, I went and just kind of poke, I've, I've obviously seen a lot of the website, but today, I went and started just poking around, and there's pages that look entirely different from other pages. There's one, I went to look for something, and I clicked, it said, click this link to go to whatever it was. And I went to that page and said, click this link to go to whatever it was, and it took me back to the other page. It's, so it's just certainly, you can't find anything, and it doesn't make any sense, so. Modern websites are really easy to navigate, they have really great search. You can look at the city code, we could use AI searches for the city code, use real language. We could do a, a help desk for, for community members, where it's just one throat to choke, as it were. Put in a ticket, it gets routed to the right department. Like, it's, we could do so much with that to make it better and to make it really user-friendly for the people in the city. I think it's absolutely worth the money that we would spend on it, so. I, I'm here to offer any advice, or as a resource, if somebody, somebody at the city wants to take that on.
I'm one thousand percent in agreement. If you're coming to our town to live, work.
Open a business.
Open a, you have to go to the webpage of the city the very first thing. And it's very important, all those other issues you just said, you know.
I have a list, I didn't even get into the list.
But, I mean, there's beautiful pictures on it and stuff like that, but.
Yeah, the other thing is our social media. We have all these great social media videos. People who aren't on social media never see them. They could go on the website. It, there's, there's just so much we could do with it, and it's just, it's, it makes me sad that it is the way it is, so. I don't know if we need to get an outside contract to do it, um, but, you know, whatever we decide to do, if we wanted to devote some budget to that, I'm happy to help with it.
Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Well, I, I'd also talked to Councilman Evans, as well as the mayor, and when I went to, uh, the League of Cities, uh, the, the Assistant City Manager at the time was head of, uh, well, Assistant City Manager, she was also the Acting Public Works Director. And they talked about their website, which I went to, it's really user-friendly, easy to negotiate. Um, they even have an ish, a, a site on their website that if you want a public records request, you do it online, you don't have to bother staff. And once they bought certain programs, instituted this website, it dealt with a majority of the phone calls that they were receiving from the public, because it was easy to find the information that you needed. It was easy to, to get permit processes going. So, and, and the airboard that I sit on, their website was worse than ours. It was absolutely terrible. And our IT department developed a new website at ValleyAir dot org, and it too is a very easy, user-friendly website to negotiate through and find the information that you need. So I, I think it, you know, there'll probably be some programs that we'll need to buy to make things happen, like with Fairfield, under Public Works, they have it listed that, uh, the projects that are going, like, this project's happening, like, the street repairs, and when they're happening, and what the end date is supposed to be, so that the public will know exactly what's happening in their area and in their community. And I, I think it's, you know, I'm a person that I don't believe of trying to reinvent the wheel, go steal something that's working good. Um, so I, you know, I would suggest that if the councilman wants to help, um, we can contact that, uh, Pub-, Public Works Director, uh, City Manager, who's now moved to another city, but she will be willing to give us the information about what sites they purchase to be able to, uh, build their web, their webpage and get that information out, so the public can get whatever they want on the website and relieve the, the staff of having to take so many calls. And as well as council members, too, um, a lot of times, we're the first line of a question. They come to us first before they even think of calling you. I had one recently where, uh, one of my constituents wanted to know when their street was going to be repaired. And I think it was at our June, our first meeting in June, where we approved all the streets to be done. I sent her the link to that particular agenda item, told her how to negotiate through it. I didn't tell her where, you know, that her street was on it, I said, just look through these pages. But with that, I also encouraged, uh, her to come to the meetings, or watch the YouTube meetings, or look at, uh, Channel ninety-six, uh, so that our public can be informed about what's going on. So getting back to that website, yes, I'm, I've been ready for a long time. We've just kind of been adding things on to it.
Perfect, we're going to have to stop the conversation, because I just want to say that this is why the parkside chats are so important, because we can have these type of discussions, but we're, we're hampered with the Brown, uh, the Roberts Rules and Orders, you know, and how we can handle things in the Brown Act, we really can't be discussing a lot of this stuff. Go on, Evan, you're on your.
Uh, I'm, pretty much, that's my last one, was the parkside chat, the things that we talked about, we have all the notes. Are there, will those be disseminated off staff in some way, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, we just got them, got them all lined up, and.
Yeah.
Are you done?
Uh, pretty much, yeah, so that, the parkside chats are great for that reason, because it brings these things up. I tell, people ask me, oh, like, how do, how do, how do we get this done, or can I, can I have, you know, whatever it is, will the city look into XYZ? And I always say, just come to a council meeting and write a letter, because, like, there's stuff that I personally would support, but I can't really bring it up on my own, because some of the stuff is just these little things that I don't want to take time up with. But if, if a resident comes and says, I want to have, you know, whatever it is, chickens in my backyard, then we can talk about it, we can have that conversation. But, you know, we can't just think of everything that somebody might want and have conversations about everything under the sun while we're in here. So come to the, come to the meetings, tell us what, tell us what you want your city to be like, and, and then we can work on it.
Come to parkside chats.
Or parkside chats.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'll try to get through my list. Uh, so, uh, funny thing about, I have an MCAG meeting tomorrow at three in Merced, and the last meeting, uh, boy, this ages me, gives you my age. When I was a mayor, the first time, when there wasn't cell phones, very, very rarely, uh, people had car phones, but no portable cell phones, um, I brought up wanting to have the call boxes, because I, something had happened on Highway one fifty-two over the pass, and some people were stranded overnight and something. So we started implementing a two-dollar registration fee countywide. That two dollars every time you registered your car goes to a fund that funded call boxes all through the county. And we hit one fifty-two over Pacheco Pass first. Well, I asked, what are we doing with that money today? Because I, you know, nobody needs a call box anymore, everybody has five cell phones now. And, um, so we're looking into, and hopefully, I get a report tomorrow, about maybe informational signs, it can be used for a lot of different things. Safety, safety things. So maybe informational signs, like you see, Caltrans has those, you know, high-wind warnings and stuff like that. But maybe there's things like, on counties' roads, we can do flooding, that they could put a sign up by a river that floods a lot, they can just hit it, it goes on, instead of trying to get crews to go out there. So we're looking at that. That was, it's one of those things like, you know, it's been a long time, what are we doing? Um, on the twenty-sixth, we had employees luncheon to honor our employees, it went really well. We were all there, we have a bunch of great employees and a lot more coming on, and I was glad to be a part of that. Uh, also, on the twenty-eighth, uh, the fireworks show that the Los Bannos Downtown Association put on, I opened that up at five or six o'clock. That went over really well. Right before that, I, uh, sworn in the new officers of the VFW and the American Legion. Um, appreciate them asking me to do that. Uh, we have all new officers, not new, a lot of them just re-upped, but we have a new, uh, run of people in charge of that, and that veterans organization is doing an excellent job for our veterans. Um, on the thirtieth, had a little, uh, get-together at the school, the Los Bannos Unified School District Office, saying goodbye to our superintendent, Mark Marshall. Uh, he's going on to Fresno.
Central.
Central Unified, or I think it's Unified District. So we wish him well, the city wishes him well, he was great to work with, uh, here between the school district and the city, and he's going to be missed, so we wish him well. Um, so yesterday, I was, like Gary said, uh, yesterday, I was at my third subcommittee hearing at the senate in Sacramento. So it's about, it's about chromium six and legislation to protect our city and other cities that happens after the cha-, state for no reason really just changes, uh, the rules and regulations that we have to follow in, in standards. I, I looked at, and our, uh, our lawyers that are up in Sacramento pulled up, they could not find any health standards or health threats, uh, that would even warrant to go from fifty parts per million on chromium six, like it's been for a long, long time. It used to be a hundred, went to fifty, to bring it down to ten. Uh, there's nothing that warranted it, no one's, no one knows of anyone that got sick from it naturally occurring, chromium six. It basically follows the mountain range on the west, between the coastal mountain range, most of it's there. A lot of it is down south, Coachella Valley. It's affecting a lot of districts and agencies and cities, um, unless they are using surface water. But if they're using wells, it's affecting them. Um, yesterday was a very important hearing, I spoke in front of, because what, the way this works is, a bill gets proposed, and you have to have a senator or assembly person propose a bill. We're a cosponsor of the bill, and, and then it goes between, it slowly works its way up all these committees. So you have environmental committee has to go in front of, uh, all these different committees, everything you can think of. It has to go up and it has to pass to move on to the next one. So yesterday, it was, uh, judicial committee. So we're looking at a bill that basically is preventing lawsuits, and I'm in front of a judicial committee. I'm sorry, Bill, that's all lawyers, okay? So I was warned that most likely, this was not going to get a unanimous decision. Hopefully, it'll pass, but it's not going to be unanimous. Well, we did our thing and, uh, came up, and we got a unanimous yes vote, high vote. So that was our, everybody in Sacramento that working for the city was very excited, including myself. Uh, staff has done a great job preparing everything. I'm the mouthpiece, basically, for the city, but it was fun. They did in, you know, I, when you watch all the other so, people come up and fight for their, their, uh, bill that's going up there, most of them are paid representatives, uh, they work for an association, they work for a hospital and stuff like that. So I think it was refreshing for the senate to see an elected person up there, fighting for the community. So I think that was a lot of it, so I was glad to do that. There might be one more hearing, and that will be before the whole senate. Hopefully, that I don't have to go to that. They'll count their votes, Senator Caballero, who's done an excellent job for us. Uh, she'll work on the votes, basically, and she'll do her internal counting and see if there's a threat of it not passing, then that's when I get pulled into again to pitch the Los Bannos pitch. Uh, it's going to cost a lot of money if we have to do it, when we have to do it, but some of the Coachella Valley, uh, Water District, it's thirty-six thousand dollars for every connection is their cost. Can you imagine that? How do you ever even pay for that? I mean, it's unbelievable, and, and that, and there's really no health threats as anyone knows of. And, but we all want clean water, I'm not frightened of the thing. We all want clean water, I've been drinking that water my whole life. I haven't started glowing yet, but I think you do lose your hair or something like that, but. Good thing that happened.
That doesn't sound right.
Yeah, that doesn't sound right. So anyway, I'll go on to that, so I want to thank everybody for that. Okay, um, on the July eighth, we opened up Body Lux, it's a Pilates store, it's right next, Pilates, uh, exercise site. It's right there next to UPS, local ownership, love it, local ownership. Um, the two girls are doing a great job, very impressed. And, uh, let's see. We're, also did our, Gary talked about it a little bit, our workshop on the annex, the old police annex, to do a one, what are we going to call that, Stacy, again? Development Services Center, trying to be more efficient for people that want to pull permits, residents want to pull permits, one-stop shop, what we're trying to get. July twelfth was our first parkside chat, went really good, and exactly what Evan was saying, Evan did an excellent job at the parkside chat. Uh, people, people have questions, and you can talk openly. We have limits of what we can say at meetings, and so the next one is going to be, let's see, on July, I wrote it down somewhere, July twenty-sixth at ten AM to twelve at Ranchwood Park. This will be District One, there's not a rep there. We've invited both candidates, hopefully, uh, they'll be able to come. Uh, but if not, you get me or any, one other council member wants to show up. Um, at ten AM, we'll be there at Ranchwood Park. If you have questions, comments, concerns, what can be better, what you like, don't like, we're here to listen, and we have staff there that writes everything down. I have the notes I got today from last weekend. We will take care of, everything we can take care of. And, uh, we'll get back to those people if that was what they're asking for. But this is your community, be a part of it. And then we were also promoting a couple of little openings on commissions. We want you to be a part of this community, your voice is important to us. Uh, it's just not the four of us up here and staff, we want to hear from you. There's a lot of good ideas, a lot of very. There's a lot of good ideas, a lot of very, very important things coming up. And I think that is it. All right. So anything else, anything? I don't see anybody going. Again, we had a closed session at five today, there was no reportable coming out of that. It was over planning our recruiting of our city manager, just informational only, so we'll continue to do that and we wish everyone well and this meeting's adjourned.